Let's get to the City Commission, Marine City underway. Regular meeting Thursday, November 1st, 2018. Can we start with a short moment of silence for our dearly departed? Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Here.
Commissioner Avery.
President.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Here.
Commissioner Callahan.
Here.
Commissioner Flossom.
Here.
Commissioner Luckley.
Here.
Commissioner Turner.
Here.
City Manager Levin.
Here.
Moving on to Communications, I need a motion to receive and file Sinclair County Office of Homeland Security Emergency Management certification for accreditation for Mary Ellen McDonald, Tifa Board Regular Meeting Minutes, September 18th, and Caregiver Expo.
So moved.
Any questions or concerns on Communications? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Moving on to Public Comment, anyone in attendance is welcome to address the City Commission. Please state your name and address, and please limit your comments to five minutes. One of you guys.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. As part of your packet, you have a proposal regarding Tifa, which I'm going to read for the record. Over the past month or so, we've learned a lot about Tifa. Specifically, what we stand to lose if we drop it, that we are not sure as a body about the new changes coming about in January, and what those changes will allow us to do moving forward for the city, and that there may be ways to use Tifa to help maintain or fix our roads. Because if there is even a possibility that Tifa could continue to be a benefit to our city, I'm calling for the Marine City Commission to reverse the decision to discontinue Tifa and instead decide instead to put it on hold. This would ensure that we do not lose the funds that are already in the Tifa account. Those funds, if Tifa is dissolved, would not go to the city. Most would go back to the county, and a lot of what remains is under contractual obligation. So we would not get much use from it in the general fund. We would lose the favorable tax base, which Tifa has accumulated over the past 30 years, and we would lose any ability to get matching grants that the city has been able to in the past with the Tifa program. Putting Tifa on hold would allow us the time to explore the changes in the Tifa law coming in January and develop a plan on how to use Tifa to the city's advantage moving forward. To this end, I'm calling for the establishment of a tripartite committee made up of Commission and Planning Committee members and the Tifa Board, as well as the City Manager. This group would meet weekly, much as the Infrastructure Committee did, and come up with a plan on how Tifa could be used moving forward to benefit Marine City. If we discontinue Tifa, but discover later that we could indeed have used it for our benefit, we've lost all the advantages we've built up over the last 30 years. In the event that nothing further can be found useful in the Tifa program, we haven't lost anything by putting it back in play for the time being. We can always discontinue it later. I'm asking the City Commission to do the following. Move this evening to pass a reversal of the decision to discontinue Tifa. Pass a motion to put Tifa on hold if this is necessary. I'm not sure that that needs to be part of the process. And to pass a motion tonight establishing a commission with the task members outlined previously to renew upcoming changes to Tifa and come up with a plan about how Tifa could be used moving forward. If we establish the committee tonight, you guys can wait until after the election. We'll have new members on the commission, and those people might be considered for the committee. Mr. Mayor, you have been looking for additional funds to help pay for the roads, to allay some of the tax burden on the citizens. This could be a possibility. You shouldn't ignore it. Since this particular motion was not part of tonight's agenda, it may be necessary for someone to make a motion to add it to this evening's agenda. I don't know if that's necessary. But moving forward, I think we should take this action tonight. Again, we have a lot to lose if we don't. We have nothing to lose if we do. So I ask you to put Marine City before any partisan biases you might have on this issue and come up with a favorable ruling this evening. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Charles Signery, 224 North Elizabeth. I have nothing to say on Tifa. Joe just said it all, and I thought you did a great job. Thank you, Joe. I echo those same feelings that he has with a committee with Tifa, Planning Commission, and you folks sitting up here. I'd also like to, at this time, thank the outgoing Commissioners and thank you for your service, each one of you. It's not easy being up there, I'm sure, getting the darts thrown at you. And I appreciate everything that you've done personally and for the city and the residents. Looking forward to Tuesday. Hope everybody gets out and votes. We definitely need some new ideas and work together and come together as a full commission, and I'm looking forward to seeing a new full commission up here. Whether I sit on it or not, doesn't matter really, but I hope for everybody's sake that Marine City has a better outcome for it. Thank you.
Anyone else like?
Hello, everyone. My name is Cheryl Verkaman, 321 Chartier. I am the no-show from last week at the meet and greet that we had at the Washington Life Center. I just wanted everyone to know, go on public record by saying that the reason why I couldn't attend that meeting was because of, obviously, a prior fundraiser that we had for special needs children at my restaurant, The Little Bar. So with that being said, I am looking forward to serving the community if I get on the commission. Looking forward to a lot of changes, looking forward to working together, looking forward to being a voice of our community. We have a, everybody keeps saying that we live on the gem of the river, right? And I love Marine City. I wouldn't live here if I didn't. So I'm looking forward to seeing what Tuesday may lay, right? Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Yes.
Kim Turner, 361 Main. I just want to say thank you to our Commissioners that will be having their last meeting tonight. And I want to congratulate my husband, Jim, for nine years of dedicated service. You've done a lot, and you deserve a lot of praise, and I'm so proud of you. I love you, baby.
Wow, who wants to go next?
Who wants to follow that up?
No one.
Anyone else like to speak? Hearing none, moving on to approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Motion and support. Any questions on the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Moving on to approval of the City Commission Regular Minutes, October 18th, 2018. Mr. Avery.
I make a motion that we approve the minute meetings from the meeting of October 18th.
Support.
Motion, support. Any corrections or deletions to the minute? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Moving on to the consent agenda. Need a motion to approve of the consent agenda with the personal action, the Pension Plan Actuarial, June 30th, 2017, the Pension Plan Actuarial, June 30th, 2018, Retiree Healthcare Actuarial, June 30th, Special Event Permit for the Old Newsboys Annual Paper Sale, and the Special Event Permit for the Lighted Santa Parade.
I move what you said.
Okay.
Second that motion, please.
Motion, support. Any questions? Yes.
No questions, but I'd just like to read off here. For the Old Newsboys, our paper sales are going to be Friday, December 7th, and Saturday, December 8th. Friday, it'll be from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and Saturday, 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and please watch out for them in the streets. And then the second one is, just for the lighted Santa Parade, is November 20th, from 7:00 o'clock to 9:00 o'clock, just so everybody knows.
Any other questions or concerns? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Avery.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Flossom.
Yes.
Commissioner Luckley.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Moving on to unfinished business. We have Ordinance 2018-006, sidewalks, outdoor sales, and cafes, second reading and adoption. They get a motion to approve.
So moved.
And can I get support?
Support.
Motion, support. Questions or concerns on it? Yes, Lisa.
Did we resolve the issue of the seating along Broadway where we have the benches in?
Yes.
They're staying there?
If language in the ordinance that allows us to effectively deal with that.
Okay.
And we did, I see that we got the language in there for the eight-foot for the umbrellas for exceedingly tall pedestrians. Anything else?
Not real clear on the 10-foot triangle area formed. Can you elaborate?
So at the point where the sidewalk comes together between the two roads, you go 10 feet back from the corner on both sides, and that triangle, you can't have your sidewalk cafe area in that triangle area.
So wide point of the triangle extending to the road?
The sidewalk.
I'm still confused. Draw me a picture. No, I'm kidding. Go ahead. That's fine.
From the point of the sidewalk, you measure 10 feet back on each corner, and then you connect those two lines. And in that triangle area, you cannot have a sidewalk cafe. Because that, in essence, is the flow of traffic for people that
Oh, okay, okay.
Going from one direction to the other.
Gotcha. All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
No.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Flossom.
Yes.
Commissioner Luckley.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Avery.
Yes.
All right, moving on to the Historical Society of Marine City, the mosaics.
Good evening. Heather Bakrom of the Historical Society. I believe you all received copies of the maps with the new locations, plus the note that I included with it. And if you like, we can go down from one to the other. However, I will say that Mike Ittrich had given the recommendation that mosaics could go into Nautical Mile Park. However, Commissioner Flossom informed me this week that that was not the case. I'm not exactly sure why, or it's just a matter of location. Do you want me to go map by map? Or do you just have any questions about any of the locations?
Heather, I don't think it's necessary. I mean, it's pretty detailed what you provided us, so.
Yes.
And I appreciate the fact that you reviewed all this with Mr. Ittrich and addressed those concerns.
I did speak with Mike earlier today. He identified these locations as the ones with the minimal impact. There are a couple that may have to be moved a foot or two based upon when we do the mist dig with underground utilities or sprinkler lines.
And of course, we, you know, before we'd even start, we have to get mist dig to come in and prove anything that we do digging down that far. Any water lines for the sprinkler systems, we would be responsible for moving them if we had to move them slightly, and hopefully, we wouldn't have to. The civic women's, they are very excited. They want to redo some of their park. And so they will inform me the locations that they want the most. We did pick four out in that park. And then as far as Nautical Mile Park, I know the objection, possible objection in Nautical Mile Park was between the trees, which I agree, we possibly could not do it there because if the trees are too close, then the root system would be in the way. But I'm not sure what the reason would be that we couldn't put them somewhere else in the park.
Heather, is your plan to, how, do you have any of these ready to go already?
The mosaics, four are completed. The fifth one is in process. We wouldn't be doing this until next spring because you can't do it until the weather is just right.
Yes, Lisa.
I think you kind of have the same problem in Broadway Park with the trees. There's two right in each of those corners. And I know the ones in the Rotary Park are the same issue. I guess my issue with some of this is first, we get piecemeal. We had to ask for the sizes. I think they're rather large. And I think they're going to become an issue for the skateboarders and possibly injuries. I wish they could have been flush with the ground. My biggest concern is that they require maintenance.
We would be doing the maintenance.
The problem with that is, is I understand that, and I know you say that, and I understand. It's not that I don't believe you. The issue is, long-term, how do we know for, we almost need like a perpetual fund.
Well, we have a memorial fund, and that is what it is going to be used for. And that gets increased during time. We also have a fund, an endowment fund, and that is in perpetuity. And there are funds that we receive every year from that.
What is the cost to do the ceiling?
The ceiling?
You have to seal them twice a year.
Oh, the ceiling. Sorry. It's a matter of spray. It's probably, I imagine, maybe $20.
Okay. But long-term, we've run into this on some of the other ones where we put things in, and then eventually, the city gets stuck with it. I think, we have these nice parks, and I know we've added them to the master plan. And I would think that we would be better off to create some type of, look at these parks to see what we really, we have no plan. And we continue to put things in. We got into a little bit of trouble with the last one that we put in. I understand there's somebody else waiting in the wings. I mean, I don't know how much more stuff that we can put into the parks.
Well, all I can say is that the people that are taking care of the parks, of the landscaping, that is primarily where these will go. They are, they do want to see them go in. They feel they'll be a benefit to the landscaping because they're very beautiful.
That's, I understand it, and I understand these people volunteer to take care of the parks because I'm in a group that takes care of a park also. But the parks are technically owned by everybody. And so it really shouldn't be up to a small group to decide what goes in these parks. This is something that we need to work on as a community as a whole. What does everybody want to see in these parks? And so I understand people adopt them, but they adopt them to take care of them, not necessarily to decide what goes in them. That's what this board is supposed to be doing. And we've added to the master plan, correct, the parks? So we were working on trying to come up with a better plan for our parks so that we, in the future, you know, are we going to have 80% green space? Are we going to have whatever in the park? Are we going to offer a water feature like everybody wants? We really need to have a better plan for some of this. So to me, I would rather table this a little bit longer so that we can have, really take a serious look at this and come up with a better plan for our parks before we get too deep in putting so much in them that
If I may interject, this is something that we started a long time ago, even before you were on the commission. And people have been excited about it. It's something that we are doing for the people of Marine City. And it is the history of Marine City. It's the shipbuilding of Marine City. Okay.
Mr. Turner. I'll wait till you finish. That's fine. I've got plenty of time.
That's okay.
As far as I understand, this plan's been approved. You've come here numerous times. You've presented us dimensions and answered all our questions. The only reason you were coming back tonight was to work with Mr. Ittrich to find proper locations that we could agree on, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So we should be no more debate about the aspects of your plan. That's all been approved. It was just agree on the locations.
Mrs. Luckley.
You did, I'm a little bit confused about being concerned about trees. When you met with Mr. Ittrich, were the trees not there?
Oh, you mean in the one, yes, in the other parks, yes. And there's plenty of space that would be, I think, well enough away from any root system, yes.
And also, I find it a little bit ironic that, looking at the city's fantastic maintenance history of their property, that the possibility of this not getting sprayed is being brought up to you. I thank you for all that you've done, and I highly approve this. Do we need to have a motion?
Yeah, we should be just approving the locations.
We have never approved this particular project. The project that was approved eight years ago, or 10 years ago, was a complete 60-foot around circular thing with mosaics and bushes and benches and everything else. This was not approved. That's why this is still here. So this particular project was not approved. That 60-foot around mosaic that was going in the Broadway Park was what got approved years ago. These were never approved.
Yes, Mr. Turner.
I'd like to differ. You've been here a couple of times since then. You came back two visits ago to explain that the Mariners' maze was not going to be happening and that you were working on these individual mosaics to put around the park. You explained the dimensions. All the particulars were answered. So it came down to just what were suitable locations. The locations you chose initially were not suitable. You were asked to go back with Mr. Ittrich, find new locations, which you did. Thank you very much. And it's, tonight's decision should be, are these locations acceptable?
It's a totally, it's a totally new project.
You even recognized it?
So?
Doesn't matter. You don't.
I, I'm kind of, because I went and talked to Heather after the, she came to the Rotary Club and said that she needed the permission of the Rotary Club to put it in the park. They discussed it and looked at the size of the foundation and where it was going to go, and it was going to take half the roots out of those trees. So we said that we did not think that that was a suitable place for it. And Mike Ittrich said that's the only place he let it go. But I went and talked to Mike and asked him and told him that we said that we didn't think it was suitable there. He had the same concerns about the roots, but I can't speak for Mike because he's not here.
Well, I mean, we obviously don't have to pick them there.
So, Turner, it sounds like there's an objection to Rotary Park only?
And that, you know, we have room in the other parks, I'm sure, for what we have.
I would ask that Broadway Park trees be also looked at at the same time, the same issue.
And are, are we going to be able to, are you going to be able to make some kind of decision this evening?
Mr. Avery.
The only one on this board who has any sense on being able to answer the questions of tree roots is you, Mayor. But our tree roots manage to push all the concrete and everything else around them out. I think if we excavate a spot to put the foundation in deep enough, that the dear tree will probably survive. And
Most trees will do fine as long as you don't enter within the certain drip line. But the problem with most of these trees, their drip lines are intersecting. And if you put anything underneath them, you are encroaching on their root base. So I'm not saying that they will die. But I'm just saying every time you encroach on the root base, which is then at the outside edge of the leaf line, you do run the risk of killing the tree. You run the risk. Don't mean you're going to kill it, but. And most of these trees are right tight to each other on the leaf line. So they are connected. So anytime you place something underneath them, they're within the drip line of both trees at the same time. That's just a professional opinion, but as far as location, it would be tough to put anything in a park if you went by that standard rule.
I think there are plenty of places in the parks that don't have trees, and that would not interfere with the electrical or anything at all like that.
Could you put, could you put any over at 300 Broadway?
I'm sorry, what?
Could you put any of these over at 300 Broadway?
Heritage Park.
Oh, Heritage Park. I haven't looked into that. I haven't asked. And there you do have lots and lots of trees.
Certain areas.
Could we consider, maybe, again, taking a look at the placement where some of the trees are, where there's some concern with the trees, taking a look at 300 Broadway. Next month, you've got a new commission, pretty much. You've got three new Commissioners coming on who are going to, they're going to be the ones who are going to be faced with having to deal with this, if there are any issues, having to replace trees, you know, issues with maintenance, that kind of thing. So it's going to be an issue that three new Commissioners are going to inherit. And I'm not saying that, you know, the Commissioners, outgoing Commissioners aren't, can't make that decision, but they're not going to be here to deal with it afterward. I'm not saying this isn't a good project. I'm just saying that I think the people who are going to have to handle it should be the ones that have to make the decision on it.
Mr. Avery.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to add that this first came up in April or May of this year, and I believe we approved...
April fifth.
Without the specific locations.
We did not approve.
Now, we'll have to check the minutes then.
Yeah. You recognize, please.
Same with you, Mr. Turner.
I think that...
Mr. Clausen.
Well, like I said, the Rotary Club, she came to the Rotary Club to ask because that's what she was told. The Rotary Club, as, as a club, said, why are she come, why is she coming to the Rotary Club and ask for permission when it's the city property?
Let me interject on that one.
And then we looked at it.
Because I did ask that the shareholders, not necessarily asked to provide permission, but I wanted the shareholders that are taking care of the parks at least have input.
Yes.
Because they're, they are helping us take care of the parks. And they do have a say. They never, they're not the yes or no, but they can actually help influence us. That's the reason I asked Mike Ittrich to please get in contact with the...
And I believe also they were talking about planting some flowers around that, that thing. And I think in the memo we got that the Rotary Club that maintains the park would have to maintain the flowers. They're going to maintain the, the monuments.
No. I, I made it very clear, Mr. Clausen, that if we did any landscaping around one of the mosaics, because you asked me that question, I said we would be the ones to take care of it. I made that quite clear because I didn't want to put any extra burden on the people who take care of the parks. Our Historical Society takes care of Drake Park, and I know how much work it takes. I really do.
Heather, I got to ask you one final question.
Yes.
And I mean this sincerely. You got to be asking yourself, why in the hell am I going through all this effort to create this beautiful thing for Marine City and donate it? Right? Are you scratching your head at this point in time saying, why am I doing this? Why don't I just step back and say, fine, forget it?
Well...
Because you care, right?
I do care.
Awesome.
And I think it's part of the history of Marine City. I think it would be a terrible shame...
I'm sorry you had to go through this tonight.
You know, if this got turned down, I'm sure we would find somebody who would love our mosaics. So, it'll happen.
Mr. City Manager Levin.
One thing that we could do to try and help clarify things is do a search in the previous meeting minutes, make sure that we get the motions, make sure that we have everything properly approved. And also, one thing that we could potentially do for the concerns with the maintenance is get a maintenance agreement to make sure that that's covered.
Those are my suggestions to the city managers, do a quick maintenance agreement.
And how long does that enter?
As long as you want it.
All right, what's the feeling of the board?
I would postpone this until she can obtain the rest of the information and, and agreement
Maintenance.
To the next meeting, or whenever.
For the second.
Support.
Motion, support. Roll call vote on this unless there's any more discussion.
This is a motion, just to table it.
Table it.
So, this isn't a substantive motion.
No.
It's just to table it. You're not voting yes or no on the project.
Right.
You're voting just to table it.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Lovely.
No.
Commissioner Turner.
No.
Mayor Vandabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Avery.
No.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
What do you want from me?
The attorney will be, the attorney will be putting together a maintenance contract.
Agreement.
Agreement.
I just need to know what entity with, and that's it. I'll get, I'll ask you after.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to startup school overview. Matt Brooks.
Good luck.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, City Attorney, Manager.
This is Hummers.
And Clerk. And Treasurer. Thank you for the audience tonight. We appreciate the opportunity to talk with you. Before I start, I should, I can't help but saying that in three weeks, my eldest son will head off to the, to the Navy to serve this country. And I sat here for the last ten minutes hoping that he winds up deployed at a place where the most contentious issue is what to do with the park. So, just, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not downplaying anything, but life is pretty good, you know? Life is good. Let's argue about parks, baby. It's good. My name is Matt Brooks. Shannon Schwab is to my immediate left. We're here to talk about, on behalf of Blue Water Startups and Entrepreneurs, we are on the leadership team for a group of entrepreneurs that formed a group to serve and support, network with, meet, cheerlead for entrepreneurs throughout the Blue Water area. We think that, we think of that as Algonac up to Lexington. And for the past several years, we've been doing social events and learning opportunities. And last year, we did the first of what we called a startup school, which was, look, entrepreneurs have a short timeframe. School for entrepreneurs is one day long. So, it was a one-day conference we held up in Port Huron last fall. And the second annual, we like to move our meetings around, so the second annual happened right here in Marine City last, last month, month ago almost to the date. And it, it was a success by, by just every measure. We were able to bring over a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty or so people to this great city from all over the place, not just our neighbors throughout the Blue Water area, but attendees and speakers from throughout Southeast Michigan, from Indiana, speaker all the way from California as well, to come into this little town and talk about the excitement of, of entrepreneurship. And it was an awesome event, again, a full-day event that happened here in, in Marine City. The seminar featured successful entrepreneurs from the region, say, other states as well. Attendees arrived from throughout Southeast Michigan, several staying overnight at the new hotel in town. I wish to commend the city, the city as a whole for being an ideal host city for this annual event. Had it not already been in the, in the charter of our group to move it around every year, I would have succumbed to the, to the arm twisting of the mayor here to just come on back next year and make it easy. Local businesses hosted speakers in breakout sessions for the conference within their buildings. That would include the Mariner, Mariner Theater and others. See what I did there? Many of the local restaurants, thank you. I asked her to occasionally let me know I'm doing a good job. Many of the local restaurants generously donated food for what we call the Taste of Marine City Lunch for these a hundred and, a hundred and fifty so attendees. That would include excellent restaurants such as Little Bar. Plug, plug.
And more.
They were all excellent, of course. Mayor Vandabosh attended planning sessions, thank you very much, and addressed the audience during the Saturday event, sharing his own story of entrepreneurship, and that was awesome. Above all, Erica Delang from the, from the Chamber of Commerce, she provided just an immeasurable level of expertise and support and collaboration throughout this process. It might seem cliche to say that without her it wouldn't have happened. It would have happened, it just would have sucked. She's just, she's, I mean, it was just awesome. Whatever Erica gets paid, which is none of my business, but I'd suggest that you triple it and add benefits. She's really, really, really a rock star, I got to tell you. As a nineteen ninety-four graduate of, of Marine City High School, I got to tell you, it was a real pleasure to bring such an awesome event back to my hometown and shine a bright light on the city that I'm so proud of. And so, again, we thank you, thank you for your attention. And although we won't be back next year for startup school, we have monthly events throughout the community as well. So, we'll be back real soon. Look for folks in the blue shirts and big smiles. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thanks, appreciate it.
I just wanted to say thank you to, this group helped Friends of City Hall develop their business model for 300 Broadway, and Ms. Schwab, in particular, was a huge help to us. Thank you.
Moving on to the traffic control orders. Chief Heslop.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. Several months ago, I was at City Hall and was talking to Chris, and she had showed me a traffic control order book that was at City Hall, and we got talking about one of, I don't remember which one it was. So, then I went over to the DPW, found out that the DPW had a book, and I'm like, there's another book in my office. So, I combined them all together, and I'm like, are they duplicates? Are they copies, or are they all separate? Well, going through all three of these books, they were all pretty much duplicates. And going through them, I noticed that we were lacking a few. So, the one, the first one I've got is this ten B, is numbered P eighteen dash zero zero five regarding the stop signs in town. So, going through the three books, we were lacking traffic control orders for the majority of the stop signs in town. So, compiling the list over several months, we were lacking seventy-three of them, so I compiled them all under one. Or seventy-six of them, sorry. So, if you referenced that, seventy-six of them, I, I developed just the one traffic control order to cover all seventy-six stop signs.
Do we have to pass these individually?
You tell me.
No, I'm talking about the control orders. They need to be done individually?
The, the three of them? Okay. Yeah, I was, I was going to do seventy-six separate ones for you. I figured I'd make, make your life easy, Mr. Mayor, so I put them under one.
See, that's why I didn't move you to last. And you want to go through all three of them, that way we can...
Would you like me to?
Yeah, then we'll just pass.
The second one was the recent paving of North Bow River between Fairbanks and the north city limits with the recent paving there. There are no signs currently. And again, going through the three books, I couldn't find anything that indicated no stopping, standing, or parking all along that roadway. There would be laws that would govern like a vehicle that would park, and there'd be impeding traffic now that there's lines there, but I think a traffic control order would help us enforce that.
Okay.
That's P eighteen zero zero six. And then the last one would be P eighteen zero zero seven. That's regarding truck traffic on the streets with the recent paving of West Boulevard. Mike Ittrich had come to me and asked me if we could develop something to prohibit trucks from going down there and ruining their new project. So, that one is just no truck traffic over seven thousand pounds covering from North Parker up until North Bow River Road.
Yes, Mr. Avery.
I have a question because when, granted, it's over now, but the work done on the big bridge, I have seen a lot of trucks come by since that's right by my shop that have to back down and go through there. So, is this, maybe there should be permits required, but no big trucks go down through there unless they're lost, and I don't seem to see indications of that. So, when they're doing something on business, there is a need for the big truck going through there, something as simple as our paving. All those big trucks move through the area. So, I don't think we can just blindly shut off big trucks.
If you don't mind.
No, I'm done.
We can, well, I was talking to the chief, if, as a truck driver, if you're making a delivery in the area, we can, the, they can make a delivery. They just can't drive through.
Correct.
Fine.
So...
Don't see it used as a thoroughfare, but that's...
Yeah. That was, it was Mike's concern. Mike and I had a lengthy discussion about it, and this was the easiest solution we could have is no trucks over seven thousand pounds. We're just trying to protect the, the new pavement, asphalt, whatever it is. Yes, Mayor?
I know I talked to some of the people that live along there, and they say sometimes some of the big trucks do come down through in there, so that was their concern also.
There are some times that we, you know, we do see trucks come through that intersection to make their deliveries, you know, to Hungry Howies and, you know, the other businesses through there. But it's a very rare occasion. This will kind of help, help protect that, that area.
Anybody else have anything else for the chief? Thank you, sir. Yes.
No, I, I, do we make, make a motion?
We, yeah, we're going to go back, we're getting to, I just wanted to go through with...
One at a time.
One at a time?
Yep. We'll need a motion for traffic control order P dash one eight dash zero zero five.
Support.
Motion, support. Any questions on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Lovely.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Mayor Vandabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Avery.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Now, to traffic control order P dash one eight dash zero 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 six.
I move the acceptance of P eighteen zero 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 six.
Support.
Motion, support. Any questions? Hearing none, our roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Lovely.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Mayor Vandabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Avery.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner...
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to traffic control order P eighteen dash zero zero seven, zero seven.
Can I get the trifecta?
Here you go. All yours.
I move the acceptance of P eighteen zero zero seven. So, move zero seven.
There we go. Any questions on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Mayor Vandabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Avery.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Lovely.
Yes.
Yes, sir. Thanks, chief. Moving on to Tetra Tech proposal for municipal survey and boundary analysis. City Manager Levin.
Several months ago, I brought before you some information regarding some complaints that I have received since I've been here about some potential encroachment or ownership issues regarding property that may or may not be city property. I talked to you at the time and got authorization to seek a proposal from our engineering firm to find resolution to these issues. There are five of these projects that we have a proposal from Tetra Tech, and the total that they have projected not to exceed to review all of these is five thousand two hundred dollars. And at this point, I am just looking for a motion to approve this contract to move forward with trying to resolve these property dispute issues.
I'll move the approval of the proposal for municipal survey and boundary analysis.
Support.
I make a second to that motion.
Okay. Any questions or concerns on it? Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Vandabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Avery.
Yes.
Commissioner Lovely.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Lovely.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Moving on to resolution number zero two, two six, two zero one eight. Approval of board of review meet, to meet on alternate days, date.
At the last meeting, I had brought before you a resolution to correct a issue that we had with our assessor. As you all know, we contract with the county for assessing, and we have property transfers that are brought to our office. The state, through their code, has a, a provision that we can charge a late fee for people if they drop it off after the forty-five days. Through that resolution, you permitted us to waive those fees for them. This was another resolution that the county is looking for us to pass to correct a deficiency that we have had regarding the dates for our board of review. If you pass this resolution, it in essence would make things consistent with the practice that we've had for meeting with the board of review, and it is something that is allowable by state law.
Can I get a motion to pass the resolution?
I'll make the motion to pass the resolution to adopt approval for March board of review to initially meet on an alternative starting date, resolution zero two six dash two zero one eight.
Support.
Motion, support. Any questions on it? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Avery.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Leffler?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Vandabosh?
Yes.
Moving on to the Tifa board termination issue. City Attorney Robert Davis would like to start us out.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, may I take a podium so I can go through this? At the meeting in October, I provided the commission with a rather detailed letter that provided some history of your role in managing Tifa and some fallout from the forum. I tried to answer some of the questions that were raised at the forum in that letter and I think each of you received a copy of that. I know this is a real important topic, so I just want to be as in detail as I can with this presentation. Some of you have heard it before, some haven't. Back in 1980, when the Tifa law was enacted, some years later, this, not this commission, but the city commission, found that the purposes for which Tifa was authorized existed in Marine City. And in order to form a Tifa without going into the great details in the law, which hasn't changed much since then and is not changing going forward, you passed a resolution of intent by the city commission. So the process initiated with the city commission. You passed a resolution of intent indicating that one or more or all of the purposes of Tifa were in existence in Marine City. And that was some 30-plus years ago. And thereafter, you established at a public hearing the district for which the Tifa would function and you established the board and gave it the authority as authorized under the law. And then it becomes the role of the board. There's a little bit of a shift. Once you've resolved the purpose, you've resolved to create the authority, you've created the district and you've established the board, then the board proposes back to you for your decision, development areas and development plans. And then when you've approved those, you develop a taxing plan to fund those development plans. And that's how a Tifa begins. And then throughout the life of the Tifa, there's reporting requirements and audits and yearly submittals to the state and yearly feedback from the Tifa board back to you. Nearly two years ago, you asked for research from me concerning Tifa in general. You wanted an initial opinion letter that just outlined what is Tifa, what is it all about, make sure we all understand it legally. And that was in 2016. And then when you decided to analyze a process for the termination of Tifa, it was my advice to you not to do that on a sharp line. In other words, it was my advice to wait and let the current development plans mature and run their course and they all had been rearranged to have a December 15th of 2018 termination date. For us to create a seven-step process for treasurer to work on the numbers, for us to do accountings, let's have one meeting where we assess where are we on these development plans and we ask the Tifa board to give us those updates. One meeting then for the community to hear, well, where do we stand on the accounts? One meeting for us to take a look at what do we owe, what do we have, do we have enough? What are our fixed obligations? Do we have enough to meet our fixed obligations? And we created, if you remember, the seven-step process that was gonna run us to the end of December wherein we would then have a taxing plan that had terminated. We would have a formula for the return of surplus monies. We would have a ending by its own date of the current development plans and we would have a resolution to terminate the authority and that would cover what the legal requirements are. The other reason for spreading that out over a decent amount of time was to allow the Tifa board to analyze Tifa, the development areas and the then pending development plans, and maybe be able to come back to the city commission and say, you know, in whole or in part, in whole or in part, you know, we would like to provide you with a presentation to keep Tifa in some form going forward. And that didn't happen right away, so one member of the city commission said at a meeting and you all agreed, let's take an eight-month timeout and let's allow this to potentially be heard and be brought back to you. Thereafter, I, at your direction, personally met with Tifa representatives and the board at large and in part, some of whom are in the audience here today, and I cannot tell you how defined I was in those presentations. I think, Mr. Mayor, you were at one, I know the city manager was at more than one, on how much detail I provided on what was going to be required of the Tifa board to make a presentation to this commission to show why Tifa should continue in whole or in part. At one meeting, I all but stood up and said, if I were you, this is what I would say. And I basically gave the speech out loud as to what I would say to this commission if I were a member of the Tifa board and I wanted Tifa to continue. The only thing I was lacking when I gave that partial speech was the empirical data and the regional data and the local data to support that argument. And that is the data that we had asked, or I had asked, that the Tifa board members gather up for you. So in other words, come before the city commission and say, we believe that development area in the downtown area has done a great thing and it's over. We believe development area X is part over, but we really believe that this development area should continue for the following empirically supported reasons. And provide you with an opportunity to review that. And that has not happened. At least it hasn't happened at any meeting that I've been at. And I've attended four, maybe five sessions where I've laid this program out as to what needed to be done. So when you look at the process of the termination, the law is about as clear as it can be and it says the following. An authority which has completed the purposes for which it was organized shall, under Michigan law, shall means mandatory, be dissolved by resolution of the governing body. That's you. What we were hoping to hear was that the purposes are not done by a supported presentation. And that's what I asked the Tifa board to present to you on more than a handful of occasions. So where we're at on the process of termination is this, is we had the first three accounting meetings where we balanced out through our expert treasurer, Mary Ellen McDonald. We balanced out all of the accounts. We took an inventory of what were the fixed obligations of Tifa going forward. We took a look at what the taxing plan was bringing in. We got it to a point where we had sufficient funds to cover the fixed expenses of Tifa going forward. We stopped the taxing plan in July, so your taxing plan has already been terminated. And we then created a list of the Tifa payments that would continue to be made and we're at a point now where we need to decide on the distribution of the surplus funds. We need to write a letter to those who will receive in part or in whole their monies that are due and we need to get approval, we need to make the distribution. And in your first meeting in December, we need to pass a resolution that would be effective December 15th that would resolve to terminate the authority. When you terminate, you have to go in reverse order. The development plans have to be done and they self-terminate on December 15th. The taxing plan to support the development plans has to be terminated and that's been terminated. Then you have to manage in accordance with the law the surplus funding and then you have to resolve as a body to terminate the authority itself. So there is talk about the new law. So in the, and I, that's why in October I provided you with a mirror image of the old law and the new law and it hasn't, it's not changing. But here's what is changing, is the state of Michigan had all these Tifa-type laws, and I think there was eight of them, that did tax incremental financing. And the state says, what we're gonna do in the new law is we're gonna codify them all into one and then at the end of it, we're gonna put in new enforcement and accounting mechanisms. So the Tifa law going forward doesn't take away or give any more than the old law did. But what is happening going forward is that the accounting is becoming more detailed and the enforcement is becoming more detailed. And that applies to all of the eight versions of Tifa programs, not just the one that you're in. So it's a recodification effective in 19. There's nothing new in the new law. There is no new avenue, there is no change from the old procedure. So if in fact you do, if in fact Tifa continued, you would be subject to the new 2019 reporting and enforcement requirements. But the law itself is not opening up anything new for your Tifa. So that's the new law analysis. The city commission took a very deliberate and staged approach on this. And, you know, I remember when I was writing this rather lengthy process, I was concerned because I know that there was, you know, there was feelings of termination, but it was still my opinion that termination was not a good idea on an abrupt line and that we should manage it in accordance with good accounting through the end of December of 18 and let everything come together with the ending of the development plans. I just want to make it clear to you that I did my best, and there are some people in the room who could attest to the meetings, I'm looking at one familiar face right there who will tell you, I think, that I attended these meetings, I really told the Tifa board exactly what I thought was required in order to at least come before you, not that you would accept it, but at least the type of argument that might catch your attention. So right now, with respect to termination, if nothing else happens, we have stopped the taxing plan, the development plan self-expire on the 15th of December. I will be working with Mary Ellen McDonald. We have to get a letter out in the next couple of weeks to all those who might receive some of the surplus funds. We have to kind of get their quasi-approval that they agree with the formula we're using. We'll work with the county. We'll get that ready to go. And then there'll be a resolution, I think would be at your December 6 meeting, that would, you would pass a resolution that would be effective December 15th to terminate the authority and that would be the end of Tifa. That's where we're at as I'm speaking. Do you have any questions? Because I would really like to answer them if I can.
My question is, to continue it, you still have to meet the four conditions, correct?
You should have a continuing purpose.
Yes.
And that was the nature of the conversations with Tifa was, you know, I think, I think one example, I'll just give you an example, was I mentioned that I did my own kind of little look around, maybe in between a few stops here and there. And I said, well, is there an area where your commercial development is not going as well as it should be? And maybe there would be an argument that could be made that as opposed to looking at declining property values, make a presentation to the city commission about vacancies and say, we have all these vacancies. Why do we have these vacancies? Well, we have these vacancies because we don't really attract in commercial development because we don't have this and we don't have that and we don't have that and make a presentation about that. That was one of my suggestions, but that didn't happen. And my other suggestions were to avail the city records to an analysis of taxing and declining or upswinging property values and look for other areas in the community that would meet the purposes of a Tifa. Tifas are put into place for purposes and that's why the law uses the word, when the purposes are completed, when those purposes are completed, then you shall terminate the Tifa. Here, this is run for 30-plus years. And the argument could be made that the purposes are completed. We were looking for an argument that the purposes are not completed. But the way it works is the city commission, you're kind of in charge. The board submits to you proposed development plans. The board submits to you a proposed taxing plan, but you make the decision. And you make the decision when you believe that the purposes are completed. The attorney general has weighed in, I've given you that in multiple opinion letters. The attorney general has indicated that these purposes are important.
Yes, Mr. Turner?
I'm gonna kind of take these in reverse order, so... New laws coming into 2019. You're referring to Public Act 57 of 2018 that was approved. It's just gonna take place in January.
Correct.
Right. Talks about in there about, well, you relap, you pointed out the facts of accounting and reporting. Could you go into a little more detail? Because based on what we heard from the experts at the meeting that the Tifa board put together, they kind of spelled out the same thing and more or less broke it down as to, not to say that you're doing anything wrong, but you're trying to make it sound like a scare tactic. And really what they said is it's just a formal reporting process. Half of what they're gonna ask for, you're already doing.
Yeah, it's, they added a few things.
They more or less said that, once you've updated your plan and submitted it and you give them a report of, an accounting of the monies.
Yeah, I'm not...
You're there 100%.
All I was trying to call out is I know that earlier presentation was that we should analyze the new law and what I'm trying to tell you is the substance of the new law is the same. The only thing they did was they, at the back end of all eight of them...
Right.
They said, here's your new reporting requirements, here's your website requirements, here's your annual synopsis of activities requirements, and by the way, we're gonna look at these a little closer now and we're gonna enforce them.
Right.
That's kind of what it says.
Yep. And it talks about submitting them six months prior to your fiscal year.
And I think...
In a nutshell, it's not a big deal.
And I...
Half of what we've got is there already, it just needs to be updated.
I think you're right.
Okay, so that fear doesn't need to play into this decision, right? So that fear doesn't need to play into this decision, right?
I did not.
You would agree, you would agree?
I did not mean to present it as a fear. I'm just saying there are increased requirements.
Right. You talked about taxing plan has been terminated. Can you elaborate on that a little bit? You stopped collecting the tax.
We stopped, we stopped. The taxing plan is the plan on how much tax money you're going to capture to fund developments. And we, we, we determined in the seven-step process that we had enough money already captured to complete the development fixed obligation, so we stopped the taxing plan in July.
So that means you've submitted something to the county, to the state?
No.
To say that we're no longer capturing?
You don't have to do that.
You don't.
You don't have to. You, so how is that formally done?
You, as a board, ordered.
Decided to stop capturing taxes.
Did that in April or May, I can't remember which month.
And we made it effective July. I think it was effective July. All it, all it means, Jim.
Essentially, when you say terminated, what you mean is you suspended the capture until the plan is terminated?
Yeah, we stopped. Yeah.
Okay. So it's not, terminated is the wrong word to use. You've suspended capture until.
No, you, you actually stopped it, terminated.
I didn't.
And other, well, the board did by authorizing through a resolution, no longer do we capture any money.
Right.
So when you did that, that technically terminated.
So step by step, what did you do at that point in time?
I, and when July tax bills went out, no longer do I capture any money and hold it aside for the Tifa plans.
Okay.
It goes all directly to the taxing jurisdictions. The county gets their full portion for those bills.
Right.
The city does, and the college does.
So you stopped capture, which is what I was trying to say. Okay.
Yeah, Jim, in the, in the la, in the lais of terms, it just, we stopped collecting money to fund.
I don't speak good legalese.
I know, I know. And I, the, the law uses the word terminate.
Right.
We stopped capturing the money because we did the three accounting steps before that that showed we had enough money to meet the obligations.
Okay. Can I ask a couple more?
Absolutely.
Thank you. So you, you told us the two reasons that you recommend, well, let me put it this way, your words, city manager directed by this, I'm sorry, the city commission, directed by the city manager and/or city attorney, voted by majority to, to move forward with the termination on 12/15. It was based on two premises. The governing body, city commission in this case, may abolish the plan when it finds that the stated purpose for which it was established are accomplished, right? Those may not be your exact words, but a summation of what you said.
That's good.
Okay. So you agree to that. So I guess I'm still stuck with the question. You're, you're telling the Tifa as an advisory to the city commission who owns the plan, it's their obligation to submit evidence that it's not been met, right? In other words, when we own the plan, we go on their advice because they manage the plan for us, and it's up to them to tell us whether or not the goals have been met for the past 30 years.
When, when it, if you, if you look at it from the beginning, when you first start, you know, you, you, you set up the authority, you set up the district, you establish a board.
Yep.
It could, Jim, under, under, when you started one of these, nothing could happen for a while. You could just have an authority in place.
Right.
And then your board says, you know what? We'd like to do the following 10 things in development area A. Let's ask the city commission if that's a plan that the city commission would like to do.
Okay.
And if the city commission approves that plan, then there has to be a taxing plan to fund that plan. And then the city commission would have to approve the taxing plan.
Okay.
So right now, the city commission here has indicated by a vote that they believe Tifa should terminate.
Based on the authority of the city attorney and the city manager?
Absolutely.
Well.
Based on the vote.
All right, so let me.
Well, hang, hang, no, no, no. Hang, hang on a second, because I, you know, let, let, let's, let's be clear and frank here.
Awesome.
I gave you opinion letters that were nothing more than the law, and you're turning me into an advocate, which I have not been.
No, this is all.
I would say, I would say to you, and I would say.
Your opinion and the city manager's.
And I would say to, to, to Ms. Lovely, I've been more of an advocate.
Oh.
With the Tifa board, trying to tell them what to do than I have been an advocate.
No argument there. You've been, you've been advising both boards on what, what the proper steps are.
Right.
Done a great job of that.
Right.
My question back to the city commission is, first of all, let's be frank, I have a copy of the plan. I have all three districts right here.
Yep.
I'd like to ask my fellow board members, have you all reviewed this plan? I got two, three shaking their heads, no. You understand, you understand completely what's in here, and you agree that everything in here has been met.
If we're going to ask, since I was being looked at, uh, no, we did not discuss whether the plan had been met. We voted whether we wanted to terminate.
Right. Based on whose advice?
Well, the advice was just following the law, and I understand that part. We listened to that, and unless there was more coming up, we followed the law.
But we, but you, you had, you had a little more wisdom than that. You staged it out over time with an indication that you were receptive to hearing presentations on whether or not the purposes were completed, and you heard none.
Well, my point is, not once did a copy of these plans come in front of us. I pulled this off the.
They were in my first memo.
The complete plans.
Oh, they were all in the exhibits, and they were put on the website.
I must have been having a senior moment.
No, no, either I was. I may have you on that one. But there was a series, in the first memo, or the second memo, we, we, we retraced the entire history, from your intent all the way through your plans, your amended plans, because we came up with every line item in every plan, remember? And then we sat here laboriously at a meeting, and we went through, was that done? Was that done? Was that done? And we checkmarked all of them.
The second premise here is that it was Tifa board as an authority, as a advisory to, to the city commission who owns the plan, it was on, it was on them to come up with recommendations, and they didn't. Therefore, we're terminating, correct?
I think you decided to terminate.
I didn't.
Or, I'm sorry.
The board.
The, the city commission decided to terminate, but left open the opportunity to hear presentations to the contrary.
Okay.
I was on the subcommittee also, and you gave out the information, and these plans have been available for 30 years. I've read them for the last 20 years.
They're on your website, I think.
Yeah, I mean, they've been out there forever, but I think the problem is, is what was, explain to everybody again what the original intent of the Tifa was to do.
Well, you're, you're, by, by state law, um, the, the purposes of, of any Tifa are laid out at the beginning. You, you, you know, you have to have a finding. Somewhere in the 80s, this city commission, that you had to find that conditions were in existence that needed Tifa assistance, and you, 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 you had to have a finding that it was in the, in your interest at the time to halt the decline in, in property values. So you had to have a, a declining base of property values, and then later the attorney general said it couldn't just be one, it had to be a systematic problem in a, in a defined area. You wanted to increase the property tax valuation of those districts, so you wanted to infuse some sort of development program, some sort of development plan to raise the taxable values, because that's where your incremental capture would come from. And you wanted to eliminate the causes of the decline of the property values. So not only did you have to have these property values, but you wanted to develop a plan, which I think you did, by the way, right? You know, that, believe me, I think you guys did a great job with Tifa. You, you had to have a plan that would address the causes of why these declines, and, and I think you did. I think, uh, I think you worked some magic on your, your one area on the, on the waterfront. I think, uh, it's, it's, it's fantastic results. And then you, you, you wanted all of that to promote overall growth in the community. So the AG chimes in, and he says, so when, when those, when those purposes are no longer in existence, then you follow the law, because the law is, is rather harsh, but it's rather unequivocal, and it, and it, and it, and it comes out and it says, "An authority, you, which has completed the purposes, shall be dissolved." I mean, that's, and, and so when you, when you were looking at this, it was my understanding that you believed that the purposes were, were done.
And, and when we were in the subcommittee meeting, I remember we all talked about each of the three districts, and one was downtown, and everybody was in agreement that that downtown district is booming, so therefore, what is there to do? You, and, and, and then we went into the other two areas, and I know right now, houses are selling at above their asking price in a lot of cases. They're selling within a day or so in a lot of cases. These areas have totally improved, so the point is, unless we can show that we still have areas that are depressed, we can't, we've done it. It's done.
That's what you asked. Right.
But it can't be based on just because you want to keep the money and continue to do projects.
Mrs. Lovely?
No. And there's a couple of things, and, and you and I have talked about this before, and, and you may not believe that you're functioning as an advocate, but you did. And I'll tell you, part of that is, as a professional, sometimes we don't realize that for a layperson, uh, your presentations in the eight months didn't even make a dent. They did not get that. The other thing was.
Who, who didn't get it?
Excuse me, it's my turn to talk.
No, I just.
When we did get to that vote, there were members of the Tifa board that came in here with a plan to be presented, and they were not allowed to speak. They asked if they could speak, and they were not allowed to speak. The other thing at that meeting, and you were sitting there, we had a question called, plus there was a motion on the floor, and we only voted once. We don't even know which one we voted for. So there was a procedural error there that was not dealt with. And the other thing is, the bottom line is here, because all of, all of this legalese is, what's best for the city of Marine City going forward? Can we rescind and go forward? Yes, we can. What's best for the city of Marine City is simple math. Are we better off having this money coming in and working on a plan on ways to go forward with it and learning as we go? Because remember now, every member of that Tifa board is a volunteer.
Agreed.
And, and none of them have professional training. They really didn't know what was happening. And when I first came on the board and we first had these enclosed session, they didn't even know it was happening. And I had to push to have a member of the Tifa board come to our closed session meetings. It should have been, and, 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 you know, here's some of the questions that Mr. Steren asked, uh, of me. Were there specific public hearings held on the dissolution of your Tifa before that vote was taken? No. Were those most impacted by these decisions business owners in Tifa districts, individual taxpayers, et cetera, involved in this decision? No. Has the question, what is best for the city of Marine City and for its citizens going forward, been publicly and exhaustively discussed? No. This may be clear in your mind, but it is not clear going down. There is no trickle-down going on here. That's why Mr. Steren recommended that we hold a public forum, and it, and we all learned a lot. One of the things that we never knew was that in each of the defined Tifa districts, you can use Tifa money for the services provided in those districts. You can pay for police services, fire services, snow removal, all of, all that stuff. We did not know any of this. There's so much education that we need to go through that this is an ignorant and closed-minded decision. And, and it was, in many people's minds, the way you presented it, we had no options. And, and the other thing, again, uh, these plans were in place and were not allowed to be presented. And it is very important that we also look at, and this is why I felt like I was living in two words, because I would go to the SEMCO meetings, I would talk to the people there, and they'd go, what are you kidding? Nobody in their right mind would ever voluntarily give up a Tifa, you know? And what we were ignoring and are still ignoring is the established precedence and procedure by the state on how they're dealing with other Tifas. They have been bending, 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 because for the, from the state's side of it, this works for them. So they want it to continue. And the other thing is, we don't know if we applied, if we could be approved. We don't know what we're dealing with here. If we apply to the state and say, this is here we are, and this is what we're doing, can we have an extension? And then they said no, okay, game over. But if they say yes, then we have this money continuing to be available to us, new products coming up, and we could be working on all this. Instead, we're looking at the letter of a law from 1980 that has never been followed by the state.
Right.
And the last time, when, you know, when we wanted to do something with Tifa funds, and, and that, at that point in time, it was using it for city hall and, and the restoration, that city manager had a representative from the state treasury department in his office within two weeks, and he sat down and explained to us how and why we could use that money. And we were able to do that and to go forward. And people are still getting accused of, of not doing that properly. Uh, this is an established precedent. The state wants this to work. Why are we, the only ones that I know of, being forced to go to the letter of the original law when we have all of these years of established precedent? And, 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 you know, that just makes no sense to me. But the bottom line is, for me, and, and I think there's some people here that have some presentations to make on this too, what is best for the city of Marine City going forward? To continue to capture Tifa funds, to have those available, to be able to have projects, and to continue to move through this as we learn and do things better, and get in line with the, the new law and the way it's coming in, or to just throw it all away and, and lose all this money, and then ask the citizens of Marine City for a millage? Give me a break. We are giving away $500,000.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
Where, about, now, this is long-term.
$1,000 a year.
I, I understand. You can put in the, the absolute correct figures and how long it would play out, but it does not take, remember now, Tifa is not about spending money, it's about investing money.
Right.
And if you include the return on those investments going long-term, and remember, in our, in our city plan, the Tifa is in place till 2029. That plan is already in our long-term plan. It's already there. If you go that way, yes, you do get up to that amount with no problem, and, and that's, that's just math. But then you're going to ask these people to support a millage. I mean, to me, it's simple math. Okay, you have this money, you get this money, now you don't. And nobody told you you had to do that, but the way you presented it.
Let, let me clarify that. First of all, I think the treasurer can give us the figures.
Of how much we capture a year?
Of what we would lose by not having Tifa per year.
Okay. If we were to lose Tifa, county and college portion would be $56,000, which is about 2% of the general operating revenue.
So that's how much? Okay. The, the second thing is, 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 and, and I remember standing at this podium when you were, you were interviewing attorneys, and I told you when I was interviewing that when you asked me a question, I'm going to give you the legal answer. I'm not your policymaker, and I'm not your voting board. I have given you what the law says. I cannot change the language of what the statute says about termination. You can analyze whether the state enforces it, you know? You can analyze whether they, you know, you can go 100 on I-94 because they generally don't pull you over. I'll just tell you what the speeding limit is. You do what you want from, from thereafter. But you asked me to give you legal opinions, and that's what I gave you.
And again, under circumstances now, if you have somebody in your car that's bleeding to death, you go 100 miles an hour.
Maybe.
You know, that, or however you can control.
Not if I'm going to hurt someone else.
That's, you know.
No, I understand, I understand. But what I, what I'm telling you is that, if you look at, if you look at the information I provided you, um, I mean, you say I'm, I'm advocating, I, I think I've advocated harder. I think I've advocated harder with the Tifa folks than I did to terminate Tifa.
And some of them are here, and there is things moving in the works that are moving that direction.
They told me that every time.
Given that a chance. Well, they never got to speak to us.
They will when everyone's done questioning the, I already talked to, your chairman. Thank you.
Even the other attorney said, and the other gentleman that was there, Mr. Casey, said that other communities have closed out Tifa because they served their purpose, and he named them.
He said they didn't know.
He named them.
I talked to both Mr. Casey and to Mr. Sterren, so I know exactly what they're thinking.
Yes. And all the information that was given was given to the Tifa board. I sat in the other meeting with the Tifa board. Everything was explained. This thing didn't crop up overnight. They've had a year to come up with, and he's told them several times, factual data. We can't just go by, well, we want to keep this amount because we want to do this project. You have to have factual data to show that the area is still depressed and is not done. He's tried to tell you, you had four conditions. He gave you the four conditions. I even had people that contact me that I didn't even know, and I advised them to go out and read the opinions that we've posted online. And after they read it, they came back and they said, "Yeah, they're done." They agreed. So...
I think what happened was, after I did my opinion letters, you voted to release the attorney-client privilege immediately and allow Tifa to have all the opinion letters.
Yeah.
And you posted them on a website.
Yes, Mary Ellen.
I just have a question for Commissioner Lovely. You mentioned that some of the Tifa board members came to the city commission and wanted to present a plan.
Yes.
Okay. Before they can do that, it would have to be approved by the Tifa board before they could even approach you on that. So just if a few men, you know, so this would have been done in a meeting format where they would have approved it.
I understand.
From my knowledge, I don't think they've ever done that.
I understand. First of all, when it comes to doing a new plan, okay, you bring the county in and they can deny it. And it's an expensive proposition, and it has to be instituted by the city commission, not by the Tifa. What they came in with was, what they wanted to present, and I don't mean to speak for them because they can go through this, was some ideas on how to do this and to go forward. And they were not allowed to speak. It's not that they had a finished plan at that point, but that, again, would have to be approved by us because it costs money to do a plan. And you have to have professionals come in to redo that plan. And other Tifas and other tax capture boards are not doing new plans because if you do know a plan, you have to go through all this process, and it's expensive. They've been working through addendums. And one of those that you can look at if you want to, and you can talk to the people in Warren, is they totally did all the infrastructure for the Van Dyke corridor. Now, that wasn't in their original plan, but they were able to do addendums to bring that about. And they worked together. And I think this is one of the things, how did we get to the place where this has become adversarial? Why haven't, I mean, the Tifa board has done everything they were asked to do and included them and funded things from the city when they were asked to do it. And we should have been working together with the planning commission, and I think that's what Joe's talking about, should be the planning commission, the Tifa board, and representation of this board should be working together. And that has not happened. Instead, it's become adversarial.
Well, I know in the past, and everybody knows, I've been here, in fact, I've been here when they all started in 1980, and I'm sure the law hasn't changed, is you can amend those plans, and it's not an expensive...
Right. That's what I said, working by amendments and addendums, yes.
And you can amend them, you do public notices, you know, you notify the county, and there's public notices involved. That's all that's involved. But the Tifa board has to come up with these ideas.
They have a wish list than it was presented.
Of what the estimated cost is and when they...
They have all that.
When they, well, why didn't they ever...
Not once have I been approached to put this on the agenda. Jim, you've asked for things on the agenda. I put it on the agenda every time. I never say no.
And I appreciate it.
And the Tifa board, not once, and if I'm ever told that I wouldn't let them speak is because they didn't get on the agenda. All they had to do was come to the city manager and say, "Put this on the agenda." And then you're on the agenda. Do I have, and city manager will concur, I do not not let anybody on the agenda unless you come after the deadline. Then the deadline, nobody gets on.
But it still would have to be approved at the Tifa board first, you know?
Right.
And then come, then those representatives could come. And it's been done in the past. We've done this numerous times over the years.
I'm glad to hear that you've been around this whole time. And the fact is, the last time it was amended was 2007.
I will tell you, Jim...
Correct? Am I correct?
Yeah.
Anybody on the Tifa board currently that was there in 2007? Anybody on the city commission currently was there in 2007? No. All new people. They didn't realize perhaps that this was that big of a deal, that important.
I've sat down with several of the Tifa board members...
I think if they did know that, they would have done something.
During budgets and Chuck Kin, the last time. And I kept telling them, "You've got to change, you know, amend your development plan." I've told them.
We had that April 5th.
It has been in front of your board. Has your board approved it?
Yes.
And why didn't you bring it to us?
They did.
How do you try when my door is open?
Mr. Lovely came to the podium.
I asked if, now, I asked a question. Was he a representative of the board? And he said, "No, I'm a..."
I know he did.
And I asked that question. Did you say you were a representative of the board? No, I was here to speak on it.
And he was teasing.
All right. So Mary Ellen McDonald is correct. The law does say development areas and development plans can be amended as long as you go back to the original requirements. So what I was saying earlier is, the way it feeds is, the Tifa board would say, "Let's do something different." They bring it to you, you have to follow the same process you followed when you first set up the Tifa. You got to have a hearing, you got to let the folks know the impacted area, people know about the plan amendment. And then you decide. You decide if you're going to amend, amend.
I just want to ask you one question. At this point...
Are you done yelling at me?
No. I wasn't, I wanted to, and listen, as you all know, I've been going through some...
Maybe you earned it. I know, and I'm glad you're here.
Difficult health concerns.
I'm glad you're here.
And I had to postpone a life-saving treatment to be here tonight.
All right.
Because this is important to me. And I'm trying to do everything I can.
I understand.
But the question is, at this point in time, with all of this that has gone on, can we rescind that and apply to the state for an extension? Can we do that? Can we?
Can you, can you...
Rescind the termination and apply for an extension. Can we do that?
The procedure allows for a motion to rescind.
We could do that. That's all I think we need to know at this point in time. And then it's looking at, it's not about who said what, or misunderstood this, or I didn't get to speak. You know, that's all in the past. Going forward, the best thing for Marine City is to apply, in my opinion, is to apply for an extension and begin to work together the way we should have in the past.
Absolutely.
And, you know, my experience of Marine City, and I came here in 1988, is that they equate winning with being right. And they often treat city government like reality TV or a football game. And instead of problem-solving and working together with their board, there is this whole kind of tug-of-war that develops. And it hurts all of us to do that. And I really think, and again, you may think that you were clear, but let me tell you, as a layperson...
Hang on a second.
You're not.
Was, sir, was I clear when I met with you about what I wanted you to do?
Okay, that's...
Okay, I'll answer that.
Okay, all right. Just rhetorical.
I met Mr. Davis one time at one Tifa meeting, one. Second time was in the city manager's office, and he was clear, that was in August, July or August, the one that you had missed, Mr. Mary. He wanted to meet with you, city manager. That's the only time I've met outside of meeting and here, you know, talking to Mr. Davis. I've had two, but I am the newest member on the Tifa board. I haven't been around as long as the other guys. But I've met him twice.
Stay there.
And he was very clear the second time.
All right, we've got two questions, Jim and then Lisa.
Okay. So you answered Commissioner Lovely's first question, that if this board makes a motion to rescind or amend the previous motion, it's possible to do that. We know there's a desire from the Tifa board to present new advisory information for the plan. Granted, they got scolded tonight for not following proper procedure, but there's a desire. There's a desire by members of this board and perhaps the new incoming board to, again, keep this thing going and work together, not against each other, work together. Your opinion, can that be done?
You, as a board, you can make your motions to rescind prior actions.
Right.
The law says that you shouldn't do that if action on the prior motion has already been initiated. Then there's prior decisions on that that say if the prior action that's been initiated can be addressed, then a motion to rescind is still allowed.
Well, the action was your timetable.
Your question would really be to your treasurer, we could reinstate the taxing plan. Is that, we terminated it, we could start it up.
As long as there's enough funds still left in the summer tax bills. I can't say that...
Well, you presented the numbers. There obviously is, there's a surplus of funds.
But what I'm saying is, you know, the collection period for the summer tax bill is already done and gone.
Yeah, Mr. Attorney.
Yes, I'm still collecting.
And the action, Roberts rules the law, it gives the absurd example, it says, "Don't make a..."
Yeah, I printed a copy in Senate.
"Don't make a motion to amend the granting of painting of the garage when the garage is open and painted."
Amending the action, right. The action in this case was your timetable.
And the action taken on my timetable was the termination of the...
Right. Based on your timetable. It says that. Okay.
Lisa.
Okay. What I still see here is a failure that people still don't understand what he's telling you. The areas are booming. If they were still depressed, you could continue it on, and you could still put your projects in, and you could still continue it. But the areas aren't depressed, they haven't shown. And that's exactly what he asked you. I was at the same meeting, Chuck. He asked me to show with statistical data, how were those areas doing? So that's what you guys had to go out and do. Look at the assessments, look at the houses, look to see how they were doing. We have asked for that numerous times. He's told everybody numerous times. We've been told several times, we're going to get a package, we're going to get data. I know on this agenda, I listened to your last Tifa meeting, you guys were told 10 days before this meeting to get us the data and get it in here. It's not in here. So even though you have all these great ideas, and even though maybe they are good ideas to continue, the problem is, the districts are done. You can't show that there are depressed districts that you can go in there and you're going to do anything with. That's the problem with the law. You don't meet the four criteria. That's what he was asking you to do.
Yeah. There are no, there are no Tifa fees, and the state is not coming after us for this, and they are allowing people to continue with their Tifas to the benefit of the state and to the municipality. And I do want to defend my $500,000 figure. If we go forward to 2029, as it is in our plan, at $56,000 a year, that's 10 years, and it's $556,000 that we're throwing away. So I just wanted to defend that figure I didn't just pull out of the air. The other thing is, the Tifas now are not just for depressed areas, but for the benefit of the continuing, going forward of those areas. This is what we want. It is to our, it's to, putting everything else aside, I believe it is to the benefit of the citizens of Marine City if we continue our Tifas and work together.
Mr. Clausen.
Well, I went to the quorum that they had, that the Tifa board put on, and there were several questions that were asked. And we're trying to do our roads and get it done. And one of the questions was, can we pave our roads with Tifa money? And the attorney and the county and the state all said, "No, it has to be in the Tifa district." If it's not in a Tifa district, you can't use that money to pave roads. So I, we're going to have money from Tifa to pave roads, we're trying to get a millage, and then we, well, we can do it with Tifa. Well, the meeting I went to, you can't.
That wasn't true. You can do it in the Tifa district, and you can do it if you can demonstrate the connecting roads between the Tifa districts.
But there happens to be 23 of them.
Yeah, so that you can't do that.
Intersections.
Can we all stay on? I've been trying to call on people in order.
Yeah.
Mr. Avery.
At that meeting, it was brought up that you may not, and he wasn't sure, may not be able to use it for the paving. But he said, "You can use the Tifa funds for other things in those districts that frees up general funds that are then used for the roads." So it's a case of, you've got money in both pockets, you shift some back and forth. It is a benefit to have the extra money. And if the goal of Tifa was established to establish growth, if you stop establish, what is that to a body? It's stagnation and death. We have no accounting that shows that, okay, there is nothing more that could possibly be done in any of our zones to make growth. Therefore, we can continue to establish growth. Thank you.
Lisa.
Okay. So in the one Tifa, and I know Mary Ellen remembers, we did the roads, they did the sidewalks, all in that one Tifa, those were all done. One thing you have to do too is, you will have the extra money even if you shut this down because you're only losing 2%. So the money's still going to go back into our general fund, it's just not going to go into the Tifa fund. And they also said at that meeting that you couldn't spend outside of the Tifa districts, even though some people spent $750,000 outside the district on 300 Broadway. So you can twist it and spin it any way you want, but until you come up with the statistical data to show the four conditions can be met, to keep it, you can't keep it.
Jim, your hand up.
I thought it was interesting at that same meeting. Find the fact here. Hang on one sec. Take somebody else, I'll come back.
Someone else, let them speak.
I was just going to say, that doesn't take into account contractual obligations. That money's going to go where it was going to go anyway. You found your spot.
Mr. May, do you want to get up and present your latest presentation? Are you going to politic or just checking?
It's actually longer.
Well, we can make it longer.
Thanks tonight for letting me...
We can filibuster this one, I guess.
To address spending outside of the Tifa, we were told by the Department of Treasury, State of Michigan, that we were allowed to spend outside the state, or outside the Tifa's area district, provided we could show direct impact in those Tifa districts. So definitely connecting roads, you're traveling to the Tifa district, you're not going to go over crumbling roads. You want those roads to be nice and neat as you direct people to those districts. Also, part of our mission is economic development. You speak of property selling within a couple days. If you look at the handouts that I presented, I think it's about the third page, average days of houses, properties on the market, this is in Marine City, you can see that as of January 2018, the average was 700 days. So two days, three days... So two days, three days, that might be everywhere else in the country as an average, but in Marine City, no, it's definitely not. Currently, there are 14 commercial properties for sale, one of them being 439 Parker, which is in Tifa 3. Originally asking price 295,000, sat on the market for three years, reduced by $100,000, so it's now selling for 195,000. Still no bidders, still no interest in it at all. That's gonna go farther and farther down market price as it sits.
Do you know the initial SEV, so we can actually gauge if it's gone up or down?
I looked it up, I wanna say, SEV was around 55,000.
So it's still at double?
It's still double, yeah.
Double of the double?
Yeah, but still revenue lost.
A hundred percent increase isn't bad, I'll take that.
But that's looking at the decrease, remember, we just came through the Great Recession. Everybody's property value went down. At this point in time, we're just barely getting back to where we started from. Is that an increase? No, it's not an increase, that's just getting back to where we started.
Could I just make one point? Three houses in my neighborhood have sold within a day, all overpriced over the asking price in bidding wars, three of them.
Okay.
So I think, I think it was like that for a while, but this last year or so, the housing market has gone.
My neighbor on Huron Lane has had his house up now for, I wanna say about four months, not one person came to look at it yet.
That might depend on the property too, but.
According to the real estate agent, or the real estate broker that we spoke to, there's supposed to be a hot demand for condos right now.
But these were the last six months, these.
Okay, well, obviously they're above the average in Marine City, so.
Do you feel that Tifa District 2 has seen the same kind of growth?
No, I would say not.
No?
Cause it's basically, Tifa 2 is basically the Kmart.
Little development.
That Kmart Plaza.
Right.
And there's still a number of vacancies in that plaza, that parking lot's getting busted up. You see a decline, I mean VGs, every time I go there, it seems like less and less people are going into it, same thing with the Kmart, same thing with all the stores inside that plaza.
What's the response by that property owner though, when you guys have talked to him?
We have tried to talk to him, we get no response whatsoever.
I have talked to him, he is not interested in the Tifa money.
Okay.
I don't see how we can have a Tifa district on a single property like.
The one thing, if we keep the Tifa alive with the new law, we are able to move the districts. That's one thing we need to look into. We can't look into it if we close up the Tifa.
But you still have to have the four conditions to meet to expand.
You can move the district under the old law, it's the same wording, nothing's changed.
But then the county would have to approve that.
The county would have to approve it.
And they put decline because, you know, they're in a situation with, you know, their expenses and revenues and all that kinda stuff, so they put declines.
At our forum, I spoke with Dan Casey, and he was saying that a lot of times the county, they may back out of it, they might not, what you have to do is get them early into the plan or into the planning process with us, you have a good chance of them still helping out the Tifa if you can show it benefits them directly as much as it benefits the city. So there's still, it's not a done deal where the county's gone forever. You can, they'll be able to still contribute.
The fight that seems to be going on here between Tifa and the city council, yes, we may have dropped the ball when it comes to making any new plans. We have three plans that are already in place till '29. Yes, we need to amend them, yes, we probably could have, but my question to you guys is sitting here, what have you done to help us? You gave us an attorney that gave us a list of things to do, and I gotta speak for myself. I, I didn't know exactly what you guys wanted. I left for six months after getting that, then I came back to the committee, cause it was not filled, my vacancy. And so with that, we weren't sure. I met with Mr. Davis in, I think it was the end of July and maybe the first part of August, and we decided to have a meeting with the mayor, the city manager and him to find out what we could do. And he was very clear as you spoke to that. We put together this forum so we could learn. Unfortunately, it was a little too late. We didn't get it till August 18th or September 18th? September 18th. So it may have been in August when we had that meeting. We learned a lot, at least I did. I can't speak for everybody, but I think we all learned a lot. I think that you guys learned a lot and heard a lot. I think that we need to get the planning commission involved, the city commissioners involved, and the Tifa people. I, you know, they made a very clear point. You can put this Tifa on a shelf and let it sit there, and when you need it, then pull it down and use it. Now, I'm not sure exactly how that works. I'm telling you, this millage that you guys want, and I'm for it, I'm not against it. But the people, historically in this town does not pass a village. So I'm concerned. And once this is done, it's over, we all know that. So what I'm asking you guys is to put a team together, come together, we have a ferry that isn't here no more, your business is downtown, lost 20 to 30% from what they're saying, business is down. I don't know. I don't have my business there, I drive around. You got St. Clair that is booming up there with a new hotel, $35 million project, eight miles down the road, I'm concerned for the future of Marine City. We might be booming now, what happens? We may even get better, or we may decline. Who knows? We don't know the future. We need to plan for the future. We need to look at this, put a committee together, and if it doesn't work, what are we out? What are we out? Nothing. So please, keep that in mind, and thank you so much.
One thing at the forum too, I'd like to mention, John Stern mentioned to us, or he may have even said it in the forum, that it was never really up to the Tifa board to come up with all the plans, it's actually the commission that does it. We just implement the plan, make sure it gets followed through. So the board here is constantly asking us to come up with the plan, we've had a plan, we need to change the plan, but it's up to the board.
Mr. Mayor? The problem with that is that the board voted that the purposes were completed and they weren't coming up with a new plan. So the indication was, was if you think they're wrong, submit a plan to tell them they're wrong.
Okay, and they tied our hands up. They tied our hands.
How did we tie your hands?
April 5th, our hands got tied.
No, they didn't. You had eight months before that to give us a plan.
And they came up with the plan, they presented it.
They did not present us a plan.
It's your opinion.
It wasn't at the meeting.
Okay, I've got the wish list in my packet.
But that's not what we were asking for, I guess maybe that, maybe we need to clarify that. We weren't asking you to upgrade that plan, we were asking you for the data to prove that the districts still needed to be there. You understand what I'm saying?
That there was still.
Yeah, and.
That's what you had to give to us, I don't care about the plans, I knew about the plans, and I knew they had to be updated. We needed the statistical data to show that the plans still need to exist. That's what you didn't give us.
Okay, well, tonight I presented some of the 14 commercial properties up for sale, none of, 700 days on the market. There are numerous in Tifa 3 here, there are numerous properties up for rent that are totally being underutilized. Case in point, where the tanning salon is, I believe there's four suites there, three of them are still open. Directly across the street from there, next to the marathon, and I think it's part of the orthodontist or dentist that's there, that's been vacant for at least a couple years or a year, as much as I know of. So, there's, look around, the data's there, I mean, it's.
But we can't just go to the state and said, geez, we wanna keep this going because, whatever, we have to show them why.
The state never asked us why.
They are now though, you understand? They're asking for it now. You can't just do these things just because, and he's told us that. We can't just do them because we wanna keep the money.
Okay, well then, that means probably a lot of.
Why not? Keeping the money is good.
Yeah, yeah, well, we can, we can come up with the plan, provided that our hands aren't tied, our hands got tied April 5th.
You had eight months before that though.
Can I ask a question? You went to Lansing, to what it sounded like, and they told you you could do streets with Tifa money. Do you have anything in black and white from them? Like the law or something that says this is what you can do? Or is just coming back to us saying, well, we went up there and they said this, but they won't penalize us for it?
That's kinda the case, because they themselves weren't, didn't really wanna get into that can of worms. I don't think they wanted to open it up because they would have to start looking at every Tifa and every plan. And if you look at the last page that I provided, this came from the state notes, as of 2013, there were 634 plans in the state, only 94 were being reported at that time. So the state themselves weren't going after anything. Now they want to, they want the transparency. That's good, I mean, it should be transparent, everything should be.
I'm just saying that because that plan, there was a group that came, the infrastructure plan and the road committee's plan came together and worked on it, and worked on it, and came to what they could come to, and then you come up and put in the paper and around and say, we can do that with Tifa money. And I'd like to see it in black and white.
Okay, well, I don't have that, I don't even know if I was on the board at that time, but also, it passed the audit.
My question to that is, that is if we can redistrict, we can help in other areas, is why I've said that. And I keep saying that, if we can redistrict.
If you can redistrict.
Okay, that's the new law coming in, it may not be a new law, but that's something we learned back in September, okay? That's why I keep bringing that up.
It's how you can do it, but you haven't brought it to us.
Well, that's why I'm asking for a committee to come together with the commission, the road committee, or the planning committee, and us sit together like Mr. Moran has placed before you tonight, and that's the question. Not that you can dissolve it or bring it back, the question is, will you get a committee together, put this on a shelf, let's meet once a week to make sure it's something that we're not missing? That is what is before you tonight, okay?
Just so we're, just so we're clear, the old law allowed you to amend the district, the new law allows you to amend the district, it's the same wording, word for word.
You're absolutely correct, Mr. Davis. The thing is, is we didn't know it.
I understand, I understand, I just wanna make sure you understand, it's always been in the law.
Yes, sir.
Can we ask you about, they keep bringing up shelving or putting away, can you answer to that question, please?
Okay, yes, I can. I answered that in my most recent opinion letter to you. I contacted the person who said that at your forum, Mr. Casey, was it?
Dan Casey.
And I also spoke to John Stern. There's no one provision in either the new or the old law, which are the same, that says, here's a shelving concept. What they're talking about is this, is they're saying, let your plans run their course, stop your taxing, distribute your money, but don't do the resolution to dissolve the authority. So then you take the non-dissolved authority, I'm just being dramatic here, and you put it on a shelf. Therefore, let's say in a year.
Or 25.
Or six months or five years. There's a need, or the city, then sitting commission says, you know, this area, let's put a little fire under our Tifa board, let's get something in place, let's do the thing to start to develop a taxing plan, cause our authority is still there, it's just a storm. That's what they're talking about. So you do all the steps, you stop, you let the current development plans expire, you stop the taxing plan, which you've already done, you distribute your surplus money, but you don't do the last thing, you don't do the resolution to terminate the actual authority. Now, I'm telling you in my letter, I find no provision in the law that says you can do that. I don't find any provision in the law that says you can't do that. But that's what they're talking about, and that's what was in my opinion letter.
But you still have to get rid of the money.
Yeah, you're starting all over.
You would just, you would just later, you would just later, at some later date, you'd have this authority, because once you terminate the authority, you can't get a new one. Right? We all agree on that? Yes, yes. All right, once you terminate, it's done, you can't, old law, new law, future law, no more authority. So you don't terminate the authority, you just terminate, and that's why when I walked you through this in my presentation, I gave you the four steps to get there, the four steps to unwind it, you do the three steps to unwind it, and you don't do the fourth.
So on that subject, and again, I disagree with your word terminate. I'm gonna, I listened to this, I went back, I listened to it several times, word for word, here's what Mr. Casey said. He gave an example at the meeting, the city of St. Clair created an LDFA to fund House Industrial Park. After it was paid off, that, they suspended tax capture at that point, but kept the plan in place, right? 25 years later, the park needed major repairs. At that point in time, they elected to start collecting the tax again, in his words, resume. They issued a bond to fund that repair work and return tax capture 25 years later. But they never terminated the plan, they just suspended capture. His words.
Okay. Emails to and from Mr. Casey in the last couple of days, and John Stern. You can simply terminate the taxing plan if you have fulfilled its purpose, right?
Yep.
The development plan can be terminated, and you can just keep the authority in place, which is what I just said, that's his shelving concept. So I said, my question to him was.
He's changed his tune, because I, word for word, I wrote down what he said.
Well, I'm just telling, I've got his emails right here. Are you telling me that I can terminate the taxing plan, I can let the current development plans expire, refund the surplus money, and do not dissolve the authority by resolution? The authority, Mr. Casey could then stay alive and later do another development area with a new development plan and a new taxing plan in the future? And that was his response, the development plan can be terminated, you can terminate the taxing plan and hold open the authority. He will not cite to a provision in the law that allows it.
Okay.
So do you understand that if we terminate and shelve it, if you can shelve it, we still have to give back the money? Okay?
Yeah, you're giving them away anyways.
Well, but we're all, we're giving away everything but 2%.
I understand that.
So the rest is going into the general fund, so the general fund can still use that money for projects, you understand? So we're really not, all we're losing is 2%.
What 2% are you.
As revenue.
That's revenue.
Revenue, if you look at the front sheet that I provided, I just did a quick, I mean, this may be incorrect, but just kind of a quick approximation on that first page. Through the calculations, about a third of our funding comes from the county and the college, two-thirds comes from the city. If at the end of Tifa, the financing, we have to give back the fund balances, I estimated the fund balances as of August 31st, total between all three districts would be $795,000. Two-thirds of that would stay in the city, one-third, or $265,000 would go back to the county.
I can show you some reports that Mr. Gaver used to pull out that disputes that.
Okay.
Is that about right?
I didn't do the calculations.
It was, I didn't say it was an official calculation, I just kinda did it as, what's the ballpark, what's the ballpark fund? Because, yeah, you're right, I mean, that calculation, I'm coming up with two-thirds, one-third, that could just be an average. The actual calculation. that could just be an average. The actual calculation's going to be different, but it gives us that ballpark idea. We're going to lose up to $265,000.
Now.
Yes.
Right away.
Yeah.
Right. Like Elaine just said, too, is the county has to agree to our calculation. So if we say we're going to base it on, I mean, what Elaine and I have talked about this, we've talked to the city auditor. We feel the best way to do this is to take the average of maybe the last five years, seven years, whatever, whatever year we come up with. But the county, and then we'd have to send that to the county, that's what Bob was saying, say, this is how we want to do it. They have to agree to that. Now, they could disagree and say, no, I, I feel that we should be doing it a different way. Then we'll have to negotiate that. But I do want to clarify about that 2%. I know I'm going off a little bit here. What we are technically losing every year out of this plan is $56,000.
That's what we have.
That's what we're losing. That $56,000 that we're losing is 2% of the city general fund operating revenue, just the general funds. That's what I was stating before, was that's what we're losing.
Okay. And going through, with, through our forum, what should have been happening, we, we pay back, we capture from the city, and we pay back, pay back through administrative services, which we should also have been doing, paying back to the city for city services, as far as like, snow plowing, cleaning, street cleaning, maintenance, putting up decorations, the decorations. That all money could have been billed to each Tifa district and paid back to the city, which then would have increased what the Tifa overall was capturing. It would have been put back into the operating fund. We, we can do that moving forward. I mean, this is what I mean with, no one knew this. Everybody was just under the assumption, the entire city, of how we were operating was accurate. After this forum, we learned a lot, and there's a lot more to learn. We've just started scratching the surface.
I mean, right now, you, we do give back all the $24,000.
Right. Yeah, that's what I...
So, Mr. Mayor, may I, I just found the, the actual substantive email back from the county. Can I just read it?
Sure.
Because this goes to your shelving question. This is from Mr. Casey with John Stern agreeing to this. If the development and the financing plan are completed, then the board, as the authority, still exists technically. Any funds remaining in the budget captured from another taxing authority would have to be returned to those authorities. The board can continue to meet and still pass an annual budget and file all the stuff due to the state and the Department of Treasury, even if there isn't any revenue coming in. At a future point, the board can adopt and develop a new development plan and a new financing plan, and present it to the city commission.
Well, if they adopted a budget, what money are they using?
I'm just saying they have to continue to meet the filing requirements, even if, even if it's a zero report. So what he was, that's his shelving concept. So then I asked him, well, what law do you base that on? And he, he said, there's really no specific shelving provision. But that's what he was saying. So it's exactly what I said earlier. You take the four steps and you just don't do the fourth.
Getting to Mary Ellen's, I don't know if this was in the old Tifa law, but there is a new, it's section 212 of the new law. It's the new adver- velorum?
Adverum, that was your...
Tax. And this is kind of paraphrased, but "An authority with approval of the municipality governing body may levy an adverum tax on the real and tangible personal property not exempt by law, and is finally equalized in the downtown district of not more than two mills in the downtown, if the downtown district municipality has less than 1 million population." Which means, I don't know if that's something in the old law, but in the new law, we can also capture two mills as an adverum tax.
It's in the new law and the old law.
Okay.
The only problem with that is, is because they also adopted a new personal property law. And $80,000 would be the, what their assessed, their, not their assessed value, but the true cash value, so $40,000. They can be exempt from having to pay tax. Well, downtown district, nobody really is going to be over $40,000.
Right.
And they also just changed that law where they used to have to file that exemption form every year. Beginning in 2019, they file it, and then they don't have to refile in the future. So I'm just trying to tell you, our downtown wouldn't really get anything from the personal property, because majority of those downtowns are...
But it's also on the real property. It's on the real property as well.
Is it on the real property?
It's, it's real and tangible personal.
I think there's a lot to think about with this new found information that we have. And that's why we need to move forward and put that committee together. That's what we're here for tonight, remember that. And Mr. Turner has made a mo, you know, made a statement here, motion, I don't know if it was a motion or not.
A statement.
Statement. And you guys got a tough job, and I hope you guys make the right decision.
May I ask one question? So ultimately, what are you asking? That we shelve it and give you time to do something?
I'm asking that we get a committee together with you folks, the road planning group, and a Tifa. Hash us out, like Mr. Moran said, in the next few weeks, meet once a week or whatever it takes. I know it's a big commitment, to make sure we're doing the right thing, and make sure that we're not doing the wrong.
So are you going to give us the actual facts and figures that we've been asking for?
I, uh...
Because you're still going to need that.
The Tifa board will, will work our best to work with you guys and whoever that committee is, to come up with those numbers. Maybe we ask Ms. McDonald to be part of that, since she has 30 years behind her with the old Tifa. I don't know what that, what that is, but it's something you guys have to decide on.
Mrs. Lovely.
I'm just saying...
So kind of to get back at Lisa's question, yes, we're asking you to at least table or at least shelve the Tifa, and not do the resolution to terminate it. But also, to extend the plans, we can possibly, through the plans, through the budgets, you know, maybe freeze the spending until, a couple of months, until we can figure all this stuff out. There's a lot to disseminate.
I think on the, on the cover there of 10G, at the bottom, you had what you're asking us to do. You're very specific. Pass a motion to rescind, pass a motion to put Tifa on hold, and pass a motion establishing a tripartite committee. I mean, it's all...
Yes.
That's exactly what you want, is it?
Yes.
And it's good, I think, that we have finally had a thorough public hearing on this issue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, it won't be short. Nothing's short on this topic, except for my bladder.
I make a motion that we have a recess.
Huh?
I make a motion we have a recess.
Not yet.
I, I promise I will be short. What, what I'm hearing over and over and over here is, the Tifa board is being punished for not doing perhaps the best job in, in providing information and moving plans forward. Let me ask this commission, how many of you have had training to be city commissioners? I see, I see two hands. How many of the, of the Tifa board members have had training in performing their task? There is a lot to be done in moving Tifa forward in this city. There's a lot to be learned. We need the time to do it. Stop punishing the commission, or, or the, the Tifa board, for not giving you what you wanted. Let's get together and work together to get the information that we need to move this forward. There's a lot of work to be done in this city. So let's stop blaming and move forward progressively together. Okay?
All right, what's the feeling of the commission? Do I have a motion? Mr. Turner?
Motion to amend the schedule provided by city attorney dated January 12, 2007, to delay termination of Tifa on December 15, 2018. We can stick a timeframe in there, or we can leave it open-ended. Thus allowing our new city commission, Tifa authority, and perhaps a commission made up with planning commission members, time to work together, update our current plan, and submit it to the state of Michigan.
Support.
Motion support. Do we have any more?
Just so you're procedurally, that, that, I'm going to view that as a motion to rescind. I think it was, notice was given, so it's a majority vote. It's not a two-thirds vote. A motion to rescind cancels or vacates a prior decision of the board.
Any more questions?
Sure.
Or concerns?
I'll see you guys.
Is, well, we've got the motion. Never mind. I already had the motion on the floor.
We, yeah. You can discuss after the motion.
Okay.
Yeah, you can discuss it.
Is this, are we asking to shelve this? Is that what's being asked? So it's not being asked, we're asking just to rescind the, okay, the motion. Okay, the decision.
There's no more questions. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hendrick?
No.
Commissioner Callahan?
How long do I have? Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
No.
Commissioner Lovely?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Van Bage?
No.
Commissioner Avery?
Please clarify again, the yes or no. We're voting to rescind the, the previous action.
Yes.
I vote to rescind that action.
So yes.
Commissioner Carrick?
Okay, what are we going to do now? Undone what we've done.
Yeah, follow, follow the motion. Put a plan together, working with the three groups.
I was going to say, there was, there was more to it. Jim, what was the rest of it?
You going to volunteer for that?
Sure.
But you're going to be gone.
Volunteer.
But you're not going to be on the commission.
You just asked me if I would volunteer. The answer is yes. Were you sarcastic, or were you truthful?
Exactly what I was.
Wasn't you?
I'll be, I'll admit it, I'm sarcastic.
Awesome.
I didn't get up and walk out when I lost the vote. Yes, Mrs. McDonald?
I just have one question, and that's for you. Now that, for you, the city attorney.
The expert.
Now that they've rescinded this, that means that I'm supposed to capture now?
What he, the motion was to rescind the vote to follow the seven steps.
Right.
Which leads to the termination of Tifa on December 15, 2018. Right?
Yes.
Right. So, yes.
Go ahead, Lisa.
No, you don't have to, you don't have to worry about the money you've missed. You just have to resume capture going forward.
So does that mean that I capture for winter tax on that?
Can I? So, I'm sorry. Yeah, so we had a motion, had it on the floor for discussion. I didn't hear you say anything. We voted, it passed. I would say now we move on to the next agenda.
Well, I just needed clarification.
I know, but you can follow up. You can follow up after, after tonight. Right?
Well, I already got my answer, so...
Okay, good.
That's my point.
Legally, what does that do with us, with the state, since we can't prove that these are good?
Can't prove that?
Yes, Mr. Avery.
Has the state come by and asked us to prove that this has not been met?
They will.
Have to.
Okay.
No, okay.
Can we stick to the agenda and get through this marathon?
No, I'm going to drag it out.
Raise your hand.
I'm going to drag it out. Raise your hand. What do you want to do next? I'm not running this show anymore, apparently. Go ahead. You have a motion to move on to the next?
Do I have to make a motion to follow the agenda?
Do we want to do, put a committee together?
Did you forget protocol?
Would you like to put a committee together?
I'm not going to be around.
Okay.
It's up to you. You demand.
Apparently not. Moving on. Yes, Mrs. Lovely.
I was going to say, I would make a motion to establish a tripartite committee with the task and members as outlined above to review the upcoming changes in law to Tifa and come up with a plan to use those changes in Tifa for the benefit of Marine City.
It won't take long, because there's no changes.
There you go.
I mean, the new law hasn't changed. It's not changing.
So that's your motion?
Yeah.
I support that.
Any questions or concerns on that?
So who, how many people are we putting on this committee? They're just creating a committee. Of what? Of who? How many of each?
Well, they were talking about the infrastructure committee and Tifa and the planning commission.
How many of each?
There's already five.
You can't put the whole board and everything on the same committee. So you, how many of each?
Representatives from each. Well, I'm the representative on the infrastructure committee for this. Mrs. Lovely, you made the motion. How many committee members would you like?
And I think that, that at least two, two and not to exceed three members from each of the three. I would add that if the...
So that's an amendment to your motion?
Yes.
I support that.
So we want three from the...
Two, at least two, but not more than three.
From the three boards.
From the, from the three boards.
Planning, Tifa, and...
Commission.
Commission.
Commission. Support.
Any other questions on that?
Yeah, how long are we going to give this committee? Are we going to take two years to do this, like we did the last time? And in the meantime, we're collecting money, and it's going to sit there, and then we're going to have to do reporting, and we're going to have to do whatever, but I don't see that it's just another committee.
I'm not clear. Is that a, is that a direct question, or is that sarcasm? I'm not sure I understand.
Probably both, but go ahead.
No, I'm just asking.
Was that, oh, that was your question?
Yeah, it was my question.
Okay. Do we have a time, a deadline that we want to bring this to, or...
Yeah, I don't want to drag this out two years like we have the last time. They had two years to do it. Now we're going to be sitting here for another two years.
Six months.
Six months is a long time, too. I say a month. You got a month to come up with some type of plan, and I think that's adequate.
It's my motion, and I would say six months, at least six months, and two a year at the outset.
Two a year.
I would support that.
So maybe we need to go back through the entire motion here.
I can read it.
Please.
Pass a motion establishing a tripartite committee with the task and members as outlined above to review the upcoming changes in law to Tifa and come up with a plan to use those changes in Tifa for the benefit of Marine City. Those things outlined above are, at least two and not more than three members from each of the three boards to meet weekly for the first two months, and then after that, as necessary.
So you got the road, road committee, the Tifa board, and the planning?
No, road committee.
Oh, you're just on there?
Planning, city commission, and Tifa.
All right.
And you're in two. You're agreeing. She just reread that, so you're good.
Yeah, I would agree.
Yep.
As long as Lisa's done talking, sure. I don't want to interrupt you.
All right, stop, both of you.
Yes.
Do we have a ti, so you're going with a six-month timeline?
Not today.
No, no. I said, they said they wanted to meet once a week, and that, I don't want that, that can't go on forever.
Right.
So I, on that, I put a limit of up to three months, and then as needed, and they can meet as needed up to a year. Is that clear?
No, it's not. Whatever.
Okay, they meet...
I can't, I can't write that fast. I'm going to need it right.
Okay.
Are we clear for a roll call vote? Any more questions? Yes, Mr. Turner?
I just want to remind everyone that if you, if you get into amending the plans, the districts, or the boundaries, it has to come back to the commission for approval.
It would have to come to Tifa board, too, also, correct?
That has to go to them first.
First.
First, and then... First, and then ultimately, you have to make that decision. So, you'll still have a say in any future approval of any plan.
Okay.
And, the wording, as I put it there, to meet weekly up to three months, and then as needed, up to a year.
Is there gonna be a freeze on spending, then, until this plan comes into place?
I didn't, as when I, this was a question that we had when we went, and this has nothing, this is not speaking to the motion, so I'll save it.
Do we need to freeze spending, though, until?
We already have one in, but that was when, before we aborted the last plan. Two years worth of plan.
All of your plans are expiring, December fifteenth of this year. They're exp, they're expiring. So you have to take action, you're gonna have to do something to extend those plans. You cannot spend money absent an up-to-date valid plan.
Two of those plans were supposed to expire in twenty sixteen, they were extended.
You, you extended them all to be on the same deadline?
My point is, they, two of them, three of them were already extended.
Right.
Right. And you got them all into the same date? Yeah. So they all, so.
Yes, Mr. Avery, when they're done.
That seems to indicate, to answer the question that was just brought up. No spending until new plans are put in place, and the plans, of course, go through the city commission. But, these meetings go in place so that this action can be completed.
Okay, legally, in order to have a taxing plan, you have to have a development plan in place. So we, I just need to know, I mean, are you keeping the plans in place? Are you gonna extend them past December fifteenth? 'Cause if you don't extend the plan, you can't tax without a plan. If you don't have a, and.
Well, if it's as simple as we apply to extend the plans, then that's what should be done. I don't like to go too far, since this is the end of my business here.
Can we hit something? I wanna get done with this meeting. Yes, Mr. May?
Uh, if we don't extend the plans and they do expire, do we not have to give back fund balance?
Yes. Yep.
Then it should be a part of the consideration?
This, this was, this was the shelving concept, that's why, that's why it was raised at your forum, was procedurally, it's just cleaner to do the shelving, you let the plans terminate, stop the taxing plan, shelve the authority, and work on something in the future. Your motion is to just continue. So, you cannot tax, continue to tax after December fifteenth of two thousand and eighteen unless you have a plan in place. Your plans are expiring. So if you extend your plans, you could then tax. But you gotta have a reason you're taxing, that, a purpose. So that has to somehow get into your mix.
Does that need to be a part of this motion, or can that be separate?
I mean.
Since this plan is giving them up to a year, I, could we add to that, that we extend the plans for one year? Ask to extend, apply to extend the current plans for a year? Can we?
You've extended your plans a couple of times?
Several times, yeah.
And now you have them all in sync?
In sync.
For December fifteenth of two thousand and eighteen.
So I.
You still have a couple of meetings before that.
Yeah. And, and we have, you know, as part of this motion, that this is up to a year. So if we apply to extend the plans for up to a year, then in a year, the new plans can be put in place.
That's separate, though.
Is that true?
We have a motion on the floor right now.
Yeah.
A very concluded motion.
I just have a question for the attorney. Now, if they approve to extend these plans for a year, wouldn't you have to get, do you have to get the approval of the county to capture?
Mm-hmm, yes.
There's a lot to it, there's a lot of things that have to be done in a very short amount of time.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
They call for the.
Do you have the motion?
I have all of it.
You don't have all of it?
Certainly, I'm hoping she's gonna give me a copy of it. I've got, to establish a tripartee committee, at least two members, a minimum of two members from each board, but not more than three, meet weekly up to, for three mon, up to three months, and then as needed, up to a year. That's all I've got.
Okay.
I think that's the, the gist of it. With the proper term rescind.
You have rescind in there?
Being in there.
Any other questions or concerns on it?
I thought rescind was.
Roll call vote, please.
Let's take that back, rescind was a previous motion, this is the new motion.
Okay.
Do you want me to repeat what I have again, so everybody knows what we're voting for?
Sure.
Okay, to, a motion to establish a tripartee committee consisting of the Planning Commission, the City Commission, and the Tifa board. And consisting of at least two members, but not more than three, from each of the three boards, to meet weekly for up to three months, and then as needed, for up to a year. Is that what your motion was?
Okay, everybody clear on the motion?
Oh, I think, I think there was actually a little more to it than that. To come up with a plan to use those changes in Tifa for the benefit of Marine City.
That's.
Review the upcoming changes and come up with a plan.
To use those changes, yeah, for the benefit of Marine City.
Yeah, that portion of it was.
But.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovely?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh?
No.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
No.
Motion carries.
All right, what's next?
That's the plan?
No, we're gonna keep going.
All right.
Till we hit midnight.
We might as well just.
Um, do we have any more Tifa stuff we have to pass?
We should get my.
See if we can, mic there out a little longer. Do we have? Wasn't there one more thing on that?
Well.
No, that is the last one, okay.
The motion to put Tifa on hold pending further.
All right. Moving on to financial disbursements, including payroll of two hundred and fifty-eight thousand eight hundred and thirty-four dollars and thirty-six cents. Yes, Mr. Avery?
I make a motion that we approve disbursement for payroll of two hundred and fifty-eight thousand eight hundred and thirty-four dollars and thirty-six cents.
Support. You got a support over here.
Support.
Any questions or concerns on disbursements? Hearing non-roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovely?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
No.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving on to resolution number zero seven two, zero-two-seven dash two-zero-one-eight, corrective action plan.
This is a new requirement by the state of Michigan, but if you fall below the forty percent funded and the twelve, and you're greater than the twelve percent of the annual determined contribution of governmental fund revenues, you have to have a corrective action plan to take care of your unfunded liability. And, and the pension was okay, it's just on the retiree healthcare. So, that's what this resolution is doing, is adopting this corrective action plan that we have attached, and what basically is happening is currently, we already pay for, it's called pay-as-you-go, or we cover our expenses. The difference is, in this corrective action plan, is there would be an additional twelve thousand dollars annually, also remitted to the retiree healthcare plan. And we would be fully funded by twenty forty-nine, which falls into the parameters as established by the state.
So you're saying what we're currently paying, you're adding another twelve thousand per year to make up the difference for the next?
Yes, that's correct.
See?
I think that's pretty, that's pretty what we thought it was gonna be.
Yes, it is.
Yes, Mr. Avery?
I make a motion that we adopt resolution zero-twenty-seven dash two thousand and eighteen.
Support.
Motion support. Any questions on it? Hearing non-roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Lovely?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovely?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to resolution number two, or zero-two-eight dash two-zero-one-eight, funding retiree healthcare plan.
So what this basically is, is we've adopted the corrective action plan, and this is now making a resolution that you are going to commit to that funding, which is to cover your, your annual expenses plus an additional twelve thousand dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution zero-twenty-eight dash two-zero-eighteen to adopt funding for the retiree healthcare plan for twelve thousand.
I second that motion.
Motion second, do we have any more questions or concerns? Hearing non-roll call vote.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovely?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to resolution number zero-two-nine dash two-zero-one-eight, budget amendments.
Okay, we may, you know, normally, I only do them once a year, and it's at the end of the fiscal year. But the reason I needed to do it now is because of the road, mainly was because of the road paving project, that was a major expense that was not included in the budget, and yes, it's all done and over with, but at least now, we've approved it, and it's part of the budget. I'm going to ask you if you want me to go through the, each of the budget amendments, or do you wanna just?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, well, we've been here a long time.
Oh, we have.
Okay, so if you'll go to page six.
Got a meeting every week now.
And on page six, it's the general fund. I've increased the revenue of the salvage recertification fees by eleven thousand four hundred, and the offsetting expenses in the special projects department. I will tell you that this, the person that we were using for this is no longer doing it for the city of Marine City, he went back to Marysville, so the program's pretty much done now. Unless the police chief decides to, you know, reestablish it, but from my understanding, he said, no, we're not gonna do this anymore. The next item is, we received three thousand dollars for donations, the offsetting expenses in the parks department. Under general fund expenditures, under office supply, a new computer was purchased for the city manager, so there was an additional fourteen seventy-five that was added there. The actuarial services that we have, we could not, now with the new changes in the account numbers, it used to fall under, all under professional services, that no longer exists anymore, so I had to create this, and what I did is I increased the actuarial services by four thousand, and took it out of the attorney and corporation council, so that offsets that. Then I already explained to you about the special projects. So bottom line is, is that the estimated year-end fund balance went from one million three hundred and twenty thousand four hundred and forty dollars to one million three hundred twenty thousand one hundred and nine dollars. Any questions? Okay, we'll go on to the major streets. This is the street paving project, that is the only change that's done here, and as you can see, the expenditures exceeded the revenues by seventy-six thousand three hundred sixty-five dollars, which we will be taking out of our fund balance, which leaves us an estimated fund balance at the end of June thirtieth nineteen of five hundred thirty-one thousand two hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Next is your locals, this is the local street portion for the same type of street paving. The cost is eighty-four thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars, so there is a deficit at the end of the year of eighty-four thousand four hundred and sixty that comes from fund balance, an estimated fund balance at June thirtieth nineteen is two hundred and sixty-six thousand two hundred and seventy-three dollars. But I will tell you something, if we, we did receive some of that additional street funding that the state gave us, we are putting it all in here, but that funding came after I did these budget amendments, so at year-end, this is gonna change, because we received one payment this month, or in October, and we're gonna receive another one in January. So that'll help take care of that eighty-four thousand. The last is your drug law enforcement fund, and the, there was nothing that was budgeted here, and this was for, the police chief chose to use his drug law enforcement funds for the traffic laser and vehicle improvements. So it was taking it from the fund balance, which leaves an estimated year-end fund balance of ten thousand eight hundred and forty-eight dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution zero-twenty-nine dash two-zero-eighteen for the, to amend the budget.
Support. Motion support, any questions on it? Hearing non-roll call vote, please.
Mayor Vanabosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yeah.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovely?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Motion carries.
City managers report, please.
So I've attended quite a few meetings since my last report. I attended MML informational event that was focused on recreational marijuana and road warranty issues. For the recreational marijuana, with the potential change in the laws should the vote pass Tuesday, that, if it does pass, will not take effect until probably sometime in the first week of December, so there will be a period there where we may want to potentially consider whether or not we're going to want to allow for any medical, I'm sorry, recreational facilities in the community. One thing to take into consideration, listening to an attorney that was speaking at this forum about it, it looks like there may be an exemption for any type of sales facility in residential areas. Haven't had the attorney take the time to look into that yet, to fully determine and vet if that is completely accurate or not. Didn't really wanna spend money for the attorney to review it.
There's gonna be some distance requirements, too.
Yeah, so, that's something that we may be in a position where we may need to act quickly based upon that vote, if we want to prohibit. If we want to allow, we in essence would not need to do anything. This is the opposite of how things were with the medical marijuana. With the medical marijuana, if we did not want any facilities, we did not have to take any action. With the recreational marijuana, if we do not want any, we have to take action. So, kind of the opposite, so I just wanted to make sure that you were informed about that that's coming up. Regarding the road warranties, this is something that has come down from the state, and communities are gonna be required to pass ordinances or resolutions that in essence affirm the state program for road war, road warranty work. The good side of that is, is that you won't be required to do any of the paperwork reporting or the road warranty information, and having your bidder do that if the project's under two million. To put this in perspective, the mileage that we're looking for, for the, the five years is one point five million, so even five years of work, we wouldn't get to the threshold are gonna be required to pass ordinances or resolutions that in essence affirm the, the state program for road wa, road warranty work. The good side of that is, is that you won't be required to do any of the paperwork reporting or the road warranty, um, information, and having your bidder do that if the project's under two million. To put this in perspective, the millage that we're looking for, for the, the five years, is 1.5 million, so even five years of work, we wouldn't get to the threshold for the projects. It also does happen to exclude any bridge work and any underground work, so if you have a project that you're doing water and sewer underneath the road, you would not include that as part of your calculation for the two million for a project. I also ta, attended some disability awareness training up at the, um, underground in Port Huron. This was something, if you remember, we did have a violation with the state for ADA complacency for our office, and I felt it was something important to get a little more education regarding people with disabilities and how to help accommodate. It was, in essence, a portion of a module that, um, there's an organization that does some training in, and it was very informative, and potentially, that's something in the future that we could have a class or something here in the community to help people understand it better. I also participated in the DEQ Clean Diesel Grant webinar. This was a grant that it looked like there was the potential that we could get some grant funding to upgrade some vehicles in our DPW, um, to move from a lower, um, lower value for MPG, um, functionality, to something that's more efficient. Unfortunately, there's not a lot of vehicles that we have that would be eligible for this program. There are year constraints and type constraints, um, most of the vehicles that we have that would be eligible, we've already converted to gas engines that, um, meet the efficiency. About the only vehicle that we actually have that we're looking at that would potentially be an option is our street sweeper. And, that's something that I think we've had some conversations about in the past, and questioned the functionality of it, so that might be something we want to look at in the future. It actually sounds like this is a grant that is an annual basis, so that's something that we could really pick up at any time and discuss. I also attended the county planning training, uh, that's something that they've done on an annual basis, and from now on, it looks like they're gonna be shifting it to a semi-annual basis. The topics that they focused on, uh, this last time was Airbnb, and, um, focusing on ordinances between, uh, general ordinances and zoning ordinances. With the recent change that we had in the rental inspection ordinance, we kind of addressed the issue with the Airbnb, as far as if you rent something out a day or three hundred and sixty-five days a year, it's a, it's a rental, and we require it to be, um, registered through our rental program. That was one of, I think, the best options that really came out of that discussion. The other option was to put it in your zoning code, however, that creates some conflicts. So, um, it was nice to get a little bit of an affirmation that we went in the right direction with addressing that. Pension, uh, Matt, I was at the pension meeting, uh, we went through the actuarial pretty extensively detailed, and that was in your communication. We have the new company that has provided that information. One thing to keep in mind is that we did have two years' worth of the actuarial for the, um, pension in this packet, and that was because the previous actuary, um, had been late in providing that information for us. I met the new East China Township manager, Cindy, she is very nice, I've, uh, I've already crossed paths with her several times, and, uh, hope to have a good working relationship with her as our, one of our neighboring managers. Other than that, um, I would like to thank the commissioners that are gonna be, uh, leaving their terms this evening, it's been a pleasure getting to know all of you and work with you, I've definitely learned quite a bit from all of you, and, and our own unique ways from each of you. And other than that, everybody get out and vote, um, I think the clerk would echo those sentiments as well. And that's it.
Any questions for the city manager? Hearing none, moving on to commissioner privilege, Mr. Avery, would you like to start us up for the last time?
As this is my last opportunity to expound on civics and patriotic thoughts, I will spare you that. So. Goodbye.
First of all, I'd like to thank everybody for the privilege of serving Marine City, and I will continue to serve in other ways, and, um, uh, an old Italian proverb tells us, we are stronger when we work together, and any, any of us can be alone, and I hope we will, uh, move forward in a very cooperative way. And I was always taught, uh, you know, you end everything with a joke, here's one from my granddaughter, what do you get when you cross a dinosaur with a pig? Jurassic pork. Thank you.
Mr. Flossin.
I'd just like, uh, to, uh, iterate, uh, everybody get out and vote, uh, if you want a, a good road to drive on, then get out and support the millage. And, uh, the, uh, roads are a lot better, drive on the two that we already completed, it's a five-year program, and it's just for roads. I had somebody ask me the other day about, well, are you gonna pave the road and then dig it up and put, uh, put sewer and water under there? We've already gone through that, through the infrastructure committee, and they will not do roads that the, under, that the, uh, the infrastructure is not in good shape, so we're tearing up a good road. So thank you, and get out and vote.
I just wanna, um, thank Commissioners Lovely, Avery, and Turner for their years of service to the city, I'm sure we'll see you around in some capacity. You know, it probably always hasn't, as tonight, hasn't always been pleasant, but, um, you stuck through and worked together and got the job done, so thank you. Heather, I wanna make a comment about this evening, you know, that, I don't think we're up here telling you that the project's not a good project, it's a good project, you probably feel like you've been working on it forever. What we're doing right now is we just gotta cross a few Ts and dot a few more Is on it, that's all. And, uh, we'll get it done, we'll get part of it done, so. And, um, other than that, I just wanna, um, everybody get out there and vote, and Tuesday's a big day, and then maybe Wednesday, we can quit listening to the campaigns on TV.
Lisa.
Nope, nothing for me tonight.
I just wanted to reiterate and thank the commissioners for years of service, it, we get, we get worked up up here, and we get frustrated, and we get edulation all in the same night, but it's, it's a tough job, and I thank you for doing it. Also, please, everyone get out and vote, it's very, very important. That helps us get this, decision-makers that, you know, think like you, and if you want, you know, change done, or you want the status quo, whatever you want, you need to vote for candidates that bear your opinion, so, please take the time, it's your civic duty, let's get it, let's, let's get a nice high vote turned out this time, uh, we did real well the last time, so. Other than that, uh, I need a motion to go into closed session, the city commission will enter into closed session for the consideration of the city manager's valuation for the MCL fifteen point two eight, six eight, eight eight. Uh, there may or may not be any action taken upon returning of the, to the open session.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session?
Support. Motion, support. Any, uh, that'd be a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yep.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Flossin?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovely?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh?
Yes.